Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 4, 2021 State Board of Education Meeting. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. Delighted to welcome all Board members, advisors, staff, visitors, online listeners, and Twitter followers, and I remind the audience and those listening that this body meets monthly with its official meeting typically scheduled for the first Thursday of the month. As we continue to follow health and safety protocols due to COVID-19, the Board's work was split over two days to provide time for the needed discussions from each respective committee. Today, we will conclude with our two remaining committees, educator standards of practice, and business operations. I remind our visitors and online listeners that you can follow the meeting online and see all of our materials by going to SBEmeetings@stateboard.ncpublicschools.gov. Board members, you're reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this board. Does any member of the Board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record. If during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair. It'll then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. At this time, I call on my colleague, Dr. Olivia Oxendine to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Chair Davis, I'm honored to do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. We now come to our special recognitions, a time on our agenda when we recognize significant awards, proclamations, resolutions, and those who make a difference in the lives of our public school students we serve each day. Today, we recognize one of our current advisors, Ms. Maureen Stover, the 2020 Burroughs Welcome Fund North Carolina Teacher of the Year, who has been selected as one of only four finalists for the title of 2021 National Teacher of the Year. Finalists were announced by the Council of Chief State School Officers, which facilitates this prestigious recognition program. The 2021 cohort included 56 educators, and from that group, the National Teacher of the Year Selection Committee, which includes representatives from 16 education organizations, selected the four finalists based on written applications. Ms. Stover is a proud graduate of the United States Air Force Academy and is a science teacher at Cumberland International Early College High School in Fayetteville. She is the first teacher from North Carolina to compete for the national honor since 2008. She was named North Carolina's Teacher of the Year last summer from a field of eight Regional Teachers of the Year and one charter school nominee. Ms. Stover, along with the other three finalists from Nevada, Utah, and the District of Columbia, will soon complete interviews with the National Teacher of the Year Program Selection Committee, and the 2021 National Teacher of the Year will be announced this spring. Would you please join me in congratulating Ms. Stover? Ms. Stover, would you like to make a few remarks?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm just really excited to have an opportunity to represent the state of North Carolina at the national level. We have some really incredible initiatives happening in our state, and we have some really incredible opportunities for teachers and students in the state of North Carolina, and to be able to share those out with the rest of the cohort for 2021 for the National Teachers of the Year is really incredible. Thank you so much for all of the support of the Board, and thank you so much to all of the support from Superintendent Truitt and her team. This has really been an incredible opportunity for me to learn more about public education in our state and in our nation, and I am incredibly humbled and thankful that I have had an opportunity to represent our state at this level.
Thank you, Ms. Stover. You're a terrific representative of the best of North Carolina. Thank you so much. And for a second, equally important recognition, I'd like to call on Dr. David Stegall to introduce our second special recognition. Dr. Stegall?
Thank you, sir. Dr. Mary Hipil Joseph, as you well know, her accomplishments and accolades are numerous, including being Regional Principal of the Year for the Sand Hill Regions of North Carolina in 2016-17, and being the first Director of Computer Science in North Carolina. She also serves as a leadership coach and a motivational speaker. Most recently, Dr. Hipil Joseph was chosen to be a peer reviewer and panelist to help vet and select potential candidates for the U.S. Department of Ed to serve in the School Ambassador Fellowship Program. At the U.S. Department of Ed, the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education facilitates this unique and critical program. Next slide, please. The School Ambassador Fellowship Program serves as a way to help the department at the federal level to find and engage with outstanding teachers, psychologists, school leaders, school counselors, social workers, librarians, the voices of educators in our great country, to help the federal department and the federal government with key policy decisions. The Office of Elementary and Secondary Education works with, to help find these candidates, works with three to four national education leaders to help them review, support, and select the school leaders they need to serve on this School Ambassador Fellowship Program. Dr. Mary Hipil Joseph is one of those key voices, one of the few three to four voices they have selected to help them find candidates, to be the voices at the table, to have that perspective as they make these key decisions. The School Ambassador Fellowship Program will look for locally recognized educators who have won awards at their local level, state level, much like Dr. Stover we just heard from, and others. They want to find nationally board-certified educators in their field, industry leaders, those who work in national organizations, those who will be the key contributors and the voices to help the federal government make key decisions, wise decisions, and informed decisions for our students across the country. We're very proud of Dr. Hipil Joseph and being selected and know that she'll represent the state and our department and the field. Well, congratulations, Dr. Hipil Joseph.
Would you join me congratulating Dr. Hipil Joseph? Dr. Hipil Joseph, would you like to make a few remarks?
Not sure if she is able to be unmuted, but...
Well, just know that we are so delighted with not only her recognition, but her continued excellent service to the students of North Carolina, and we congratulate them. Thank you, Dr. Stegall. And our next item on our agenda is a COVID-19 update. I want to continue to thank our partners at the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Through their feedback and collaboration, we're able to return more students to in-person instruction, as well as ensure educators are prioritized for vaccination as they are and continue to be essential employees. As we continue to follow the three W's, we know they're effective and they keep us all safe. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Chief Deputy Secretary Gail Perry and Dr. Tilson from the Department of Health and Human Services for today's presentation. Chief Deputy?
Good morning, Chairman Davis. Good morning, Superintendent Truitt. Good morning, members of the Board, and everyone who's joined today. As always, it is a privilege and a joy to be with my education partners. We have some updates for you today, and I will move through them quickly, although before I do that, I'd like to do my own special recognition very quickly and recognize Ms. Deanna Townsend-Smith, who has been such a great partner to us and has seamlessly worked with us to prepare these updates, to give us guidance and input all along the way. She is a wonderful partner and often behind the scenes, so just wanted to give her a shout out this morning. And with that, I will go move into the presentation and just go over what we're going to cover today on the next slide. Just, we would like to do a little bit of an update on what are our current trends, what are we looking like statewide, a lot of good news, I would say, to report there. I will give you an update on the recently released CDC Operational Strategy that has come out since we last met. Then, I also have with me Dr. Aditi Malik, who will talk about the K-12 COVID-19 antigen testing expansion in the works, and we will talk briefly, Dr. Tilson, about COVID-19 vaccination distribution, and then end with the details on the update that we made just yesterday to the Strong Schools Toolkit. Let me just start by talking about our trends, and if we look at that first graph, we can look at how cases are looking statewide. We've moved to the next slide quickly. There you see, just again, good news overall. So I don't have a lot of slides on our data and trends, just to say that among all age groups, we are seeing a very significant and positive decline in cases. Our percent positive is also going down and moving in a very good direction, getting closer to the 5% to 6% levels, which are very positive. So these are all good news, getting us back to rates that we haven't seen since into the fall. So very positive hospitalizations also going down. So overall, very good, good, positive movement as we see vaccines roll out across our state, and we continue to move forward. So we are hoping those trends continue, and I'll talk just briefly about clusters. You can see that we have 62 currently active clusters, 40 at public schools, 22 at private schools, 184 since June. As we've discussed before, we'll note that, you know, we have continued to see significantly more clusters in our private schools compared to our public schools, so more than twice the rate in our private schools. So we have continued to work with our private school partners on implementing the strong mitigation protocols that we have in place to try to address those clusters. Next slide, please. So a few updates on the CDC Operational Strategy for K-12 that was released on February 12. And I want to pause here for a moment, and it's good for us all to be reminded that although for many of us, it feels like 100 years or at least 10 years, it's really only one year ago that we really began to understand that we were facing the most significant pandemic that we have experienced in our lifetimes over the last century. And we're learning a lot about COVID-19 and how to slow spread, and obviously, we now have a vaccination. So the amount of learning that has happened in a relatively short time is very, very significant. So this new operational strategy just continues to refine the mitigation strategies that we know are most effective and provide more operational details based on recent and continued studies and learnings that we have. So I would say the highlights from the CDC Operational Strategy emphasizes the importance of schools opening their buildings for in-person instruction. So we've talked a lot about, you know, balancing the relative health risk of COVID-19 with what we know to be risks for children who are not in-person learning across their academic, their physical, their nutritional health, their social, emotional well-being. So this new guidance really emphasizes the importance of schools being open for in-person instruction, particularly for those younger children, with strict implementation of the health and safety mitigation efforts. It directs the consistent use of layered mitigation strategies. You've heard Dr. Tilson talk about the lasagna, the prevention strategy lasagna, and this again, talks about the importance of those layered mitigation strategies. And again, one of the things that we've learned throughout this pandemic, particularly important, the two most effective tools we have, the universal incorrect use of the masks and the physical distancing. It's also important to understand that the guidance, if you haven't read it carefully, does calibrate their requirements and recommendations based on four levels of community transmission as measured by the cases per 100,000 and percent positivity rate, and they divide it up into low, moderate, substantial, and critical levels of community spread. And, you know, as positive as our trends currently are, currently 99 of the 100 counties in North Carolina would be either in the substantial or critical zones according to the CDC School Operational Strategy. And again, that's even with our improved metrics, although I will say we are seeing, you know, rapid improvements in those metrics, and if those hold, even with the new variants, we expect that to, you know, to move in a very positive direction relatively quickly. So based on that guidance, it requires the six feet social distancing for middle and high school students at the orange and red levels, which again, 99 of North Carolina's counties are in, and it recommends the six feet social distancing to the fullest extent possible for the blue and yellow levels of community spread. So those are the low and moderate levels. The guidance also emphasizes the importance of vaccines as an additional mitigation effort, and it also recommends that K-12 schools work closely with local health departments in facilitating contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantines efforts. That's again, to slow this spread. As we're seeing lower rates of transmission, we are more able to get on top of that rapid contact tracing and, you know, isolate and quarantine as needed to really keep that transmission, those transmission levels low. And then finally, and this is going to move us into the next section, it does recommend diagnostic and screening testing for COVID-19 as an additional layer of mitigation, which is why we did that pilot with our antigen tests, and we are now going to expand it. So with that, I believe I'll turn it over to Dr. Malik to turn about that testing expansion. And Dr. Malik, over to you.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone. Pleasure to be with you today. Let's move to the next slide, please.
Dr. Malik, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Uh-oh.
I can hear Dr. Malik.
Can others hear me?
We can hear her.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for the confirmation there. So I'll start by giving us a brief recap of what exactly...
Are others able to hear Dr. Malik, or is it just me?
We think it's just you, Susan. We can hear Dr. Malik.
Deputy Gail Perry, we can hear her. Let me, you can go ahead, Dr. Malik.
Okay, okay. Thank you all again for the opportunity to be with you today. Wanted to start by first reviewing what exactly these antigen tests are, and I realize for some, this may be old hat, but what we are talking about here is antigen tests, which are in orange throughout this slide. So what the antigen tests do is they are able to diagnose current infection by detecting the presence of viral proteins. And I'll just say, the advantage of antigen tests over PCR tests is that they are quite fast, and they are relatively inexpensive. The trade-off between the antigen tests and the PCR-based tests or molecular-based tests that you may have heard about is the molecular-based tests are able to detect virus in even smaller quantities. So the term you may have heard is, PCR tests are more sensitive at detecting infection, but antigen tests, as I said, have the advantage of cost and speed, distinct from antibody tests, which will tell you about whether you've had the infection, whether you've had COVID-19 before, but don't give you information about current infection. Let's move to the next slide, please. So to recap, and this is largely what Chief Deputy Secretary Gail Perry just went over, the CDC released its updated K-12 Operational Strategy last month that really highlighted the use of testing as an additional layer of prevention in that prevention lasagna. So testing, considered really alongside other key mitigation strategies that you all are no doubt very familiar with from what are in those strong school requirements, things like universal masking and physical distancing. And I'll just take a moment here to articulate the difference between diagnostic testing and screening testing. So diagnostic testing really means for people who have symptoms or who have been in close contact with someone known to have COVID-19, so someone who is known to have tested positive. Screening testing, by distinction, means looking for infection in people who may be totally asymptomatic, sometimes referred to as surveillance, but what this means is a routine, on a routine, regular basis, using these rapid tests to periodically surveil a group for the virus, whether or not they have symptoms or whether or not they were close contact. So the CDC, as part of its recommendations, look to screening testing once a week or more as a means of being able to do early detection of the virus, to be able to stop it from spreading in classrooms or in schools in general, to be able to quickly isolate presumptive cases and thereby reduce transmission. Let's move to the next slide, please. So you recall back in 2020, which I realize now feels like ages ago, we had come to this group with a pilot opportunity. And so just to recap, back in the fall, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services had procured on the order of hundreds of millions of these Abbott Binax now, rapid antigen tests, and had distributed them to states. You'll recall, they are primarily designed for diagnostic testing, again, for folks with symptoms or who have been in close contact. And what our pilot opportunity was from December of 2020 to just last month was to use these free tests for diagnostic testing in schools. We ended up having 17 schools, school districts, excuse me, 11 charter schools, and over 200 physical school locations conduct over 50,000 tests. And the pilot was successful. We heard a lot of great feedback about having these tests be a real resource to everyone in the school, but actually the community and families in particular, to be able to identify cases and keep everyone that much safer, knowing who was positive and who was not. Let's move to the next slide, please. And so what we'd like to share with this group today, based on the lessons learned from that pilot, is to share that we will be expanding access to COVID-19 rapid testing to all K-12 public schools on an opt-in basis, to really add an additional layer of protection for students, school staff, teachers, and really the broader community and families. So I'd like to spend a few minutes here outlining for you all what is entailed in this. So local education authorities and charter schools can choose to request tests for either or both of the below options, not in any way tied to implications for reopening of their schools, which I know you all are actively engaged in as well. The two use cases here would be testing of anyone, including students, family, or school staff who are symptomatic or no close contact, and so aka diagnostic testing. The other is once-weekly testing, screening of all adults, including teachers and staff. And I'll just pause here for a moment to say, the reason for doing this initially with screening of adults is because we know COVID-19 doesn't impact younger and older people equally. So older people tend to have more severe manifestations of the disease, and so catching cases in those folks has certainly implications for everyone they interact with, but also allows us to curtail some of the really scary, potentially scary downstream impacts of severe illness from COVID-19. This would be for all public local education agencies and charter schools that choose to participate. So really want to emphasize that this would be an opt-in. Beginning today, LEAs and charter schools can request tests through at least the end of the calendar school year, and the state and NCDHHS will commit to making those resources available free of charge to any LEA or charter school that wishes to participate. So anyone interested in receiving these tests is going to be responsible for developing a plan to meet all of the testing requirements before submitting the online request form. If we go to the next slide, I will walk through what those requirements are. So in order to receive free COVID-19 tests, the LEA or the charter school must be able to meet the requirements that you see here on this page. And I will say, for folks that are familiar with the pilot from last December, January, February, these are the exact same requirements. So no changes in the basic structure of what's needed here. To go over them briefly, the CLIA certificate, if folks are unfamiliar with that, so this is item number one on the slide that's on your screens now, is really a regulatory certification to show that you have the appropriate oversight and training to be able to perform these tests. Two is a physician order to be able to do these tests. In the absence of a specific standing, excuse me, a specific physician order for the LEA or the charter school, we welcome you to use the statewide standing order by Dr. Betsy Tilson. And the remainder of the requirements, without reading them to you one by one, are things like completion of the training modules, ensuring that there's a means for both consent and notification to parents or guardians around any tests performed on students, the ability to report the test results to state or local public health, PPE, medical waste, and a plan for safe isolation and quarantine. Through our pilot, we learned that LEAs and charter schools chose to meet these requirements either independently or in partnership with a clinical provider, a laboratory, or other similar organization. Excuse me, I point this out because there is intentionally a fair amount of flexibility here for LEAs or charter schools to design a testing program that is right for them so long as it meets these requirements. Next slide, please. So having said all of that, I'd like to end with a bit about what happens from here and what the call to action is. So the online request form and the testing guidance will launch online today via the NCDHHS website and associated email communications. LEAs and charter schools can begin requesting tests via that online request form as soon as they are able to demonstrate that they meet all of the testing requirements. And I'll just say, the demonstration of meeting those testing requirements is attestation-based as part of the online request form. NCDHHS will provide resources to help support interested LEAs and schools in these efforts. Those include the resources that you see listed here, so weekly office hours for a virtual face-to-face for Q and A for anyone interested or already enrolled, additional training sessions on the reporting platform, so how to result, excuse me, how to report positive and negative results of these antigen tests. And of course, we remain at the ready, able to answer questions and engage via our email inbox there, strongschoolsnc@dhhs.nc.gov for questions and support. With that, I will pause there and hand the mic to my colleague, Dr. Betsy Tilson.
Thank you very, very much. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. And I'll be relatively brief because I know we've given you a lot of content. We do want to be sure that there are, we have time for questions. But I did want to talk about the another layer in our prevention lasagna. But I did want to talk about the another layer in our prevention lasagna, which Chief Deputy Secretary Gail Perry mentioned. We, really, the key to all this is layered prevention strategy. The Strong Schools Toolkit is an incredibly strong base on which we can build, and especially with those face coverings and social distancing. And then we can continue to add additional layers of protection with that testing being an additional layer of protection, and then vaccination being another additional protection of layer on our prevention lasagna. We're really thinking about our vaccine strategy as fast and fair, meaning that we are very committed to be sure that we are getting our vaccinations out efficiently and quickly, but also equitably. We are, as of this morning, almost 1.7 million North Carolinians have gotten a vaccine. We are the top in the country in getting our 65 and over vaccinated, which was our initial priority, as well as our folks in our long-term care settings, nursing homes. Chief Deputy Secretary Gail Perry showed you some of our trends, and we're seeing great, great trends in our 65 and over and our outbreaks in our nursing homes. So we're really excited to see that fast distribution and the effect of that distribution. Our next phase, and that's our Group One and Two, our next group are frontline essential workers. And as you all know, our educators were the first phase of, of that Group Three. And as of yesterday, yesterday, we have opened up to our other frontline essential workers. I'm very excited to be able to quickly get that group vaccinated as well. On the next slide, please. Wonderful. So just a little bit of an update, some numbers that we pulled on Tuesday that we know at least 50,000 individuals who identified as frontline essential workers in our educators have already gotten a vaccine. We think this is a big undercount, but it's exciting to see those numbers. And we know that there's been at least 20 identified events that specifically have targeted educators, and we're hearing more and more that we know there's other, there's other events that have targeted educators. And just a really, really important reminder, though, that educators can get vaccinations, not just in a target event, but can go to any enrolled vaccination provider and can go ahead and get themselves signed up. And I know a lot of our educators have been going to Walgreens, going to the pharmacy, going to other sites, and just getting themselves an appointment. So just to remember that you are not, our educators are not only limited to those specific sites targeted for, for educators. And we're really excited to be able to be able to roll out those vaccinations as quickly as possible. Well, a couple of good news for the state is that not only are some of our allocations increasing, but also, you probably all heard over the weekend, that we have yet another vaccine in our arsenal that will really help us be able to get those vaccines out really quickly. And so that was the Johnson &amp; Johnson, which was not only authorized by the, by the FDA, but also recommended by the CDC Advisory Committee on Immunization Practice for people over 18. And so that will really help us as well. The beauty of the Johnson &amp; Johnson is that it is only a one-dose vaccination, which is really great and really helps us be able to get out to more and more of our people. A tiny little primer on J&amp;J, we're happy to come back and do deeper dives on, on the Johnson &amp; Johnson in, in future meetings, if you would like. The one thing that I just want to say is that you will see it referred to two different ways, either the Yanson or Johnson &amp; Johnson, don't get confused, it's the same vaccination. Some, some really nice background information on this, it's just like the Pfizer and the Moderna, this is really, this vaccination was based on decades of previous work for similar vaccinations as well. So this is not new methodology, they said it's a one-dose vaccination, which is really exciting. And again, what the whole point of vaccination is that it introduces a little bit of a protein, a piece of, just a piece of that virus, which then is able then to trigger that immune response in our bodies, so that if we were to see the real virus, we would be ready to be able to fight that virus off. This vaccine is different, the Pfizer and the Moderna, which we talked about before, is a messenger RNA vaccine. This vaccine is slightly different, it has that genetic material that codes for the, the piece of the virus, but it is, instead of being wrapped in a, a little envelope of lipids, it is embedded in another type of virus called adenovirus. But really, really, really important pieces to understand is that this adenovirus, it's not a live virus, it cannot replicate, none of these vaccines are live virus vaccines. This adenovirus, it's just a transport for the genetic material, it does not replicate. So you cannot get either adenovirus and you cannot get COVID-19 from the vaccines, they are, these are not live vaccines, really important piece to, to message. And then just a little bit in terms of the data, it was a big clinical trial, just like the other clinical trials. It does have slightly more modest protection against moderate, mild and moderate disease, so 66%, but what is really, really important is that incredibly effective and on par with the other vaccines in preventing severe illness, hospitalizations, and death. And after actually 28 days of this vaccine, there was no hospitalizations, no deaths. So really effective vaccine in preventing hospitalizations and, and death, without any significant safety concerns, just like the other vaccines. And it is to be expected that there is those temporary reactions after the vaccine, just like Pfizer and, and Moderna. So very similar and equally effective in preventing severe illness, hospitalizations, and death, which is really great news. Next slide, please. Okay. And then just mostly for your reference, we have a whole host of new resources on our website, we really want you to go to our website, pull all this down, we have our resources in English and in Spanish and different infographics, social media graphics, we have PSAs, we have a whole wealth of information that we really want you to take advantage of, to be able to share amongst your networks. Next slide, please. Great. Including those geared specifically to our educators, so our childcare and our school workers as well, and we have a whole flyers and toolkit geared to our education folks. So please take advantage of that and use that as a resource for your people. And then the last one is, as I mentioned, so there are some education settings that are having dedicated sites and events just for their educators, but a lot of our educators, again, also can navigate to any of our enrolled providers, and include, for example, Walgreens. So just want to be sure that you are aware of and that you're spreading some of the tools that we have, in that you can look at your eligibility tracker and, and understand where, where if you're eligible. Again, every, all of the educators are currently eligible in Group Three. But even more important, though, find your spot on the right-hand side of the screen, is that there's a listing of all of our vaccinating providers, people can search by their ZIP code, they can find a vaccinated provider that is close to them, and they can go ahead and make appointments on their own. And just as a reminder, you do not need to be vaccinated in the county in which you live or the county in which you work, you can go to any vaccinating provider across the state, and this, that our vaccine provider helps, locator helps people find those spots as well. Okay. And that is a quick update on our vaccines. And I'll send it back to Chief Deputy Secretary Gail Perry to talk a little bit about some toolkit updates.
Thank you, Dr. Tilson. Hello, everyone. Apologies for my earlier technical difficulties. I'll walk quickly through the primary updates to our toolkit. Yesterday, we'll be putting up some additional revisions, mainly technical, today. So let's just turn and take a look on the next slide at our, at our updated guidance. I, I think we wanted to make sure that our guidance was crystal clear on the expectation that all schools K through 12 can and should be in in-person instruction at this time. Schools should only be using remote learning options for higher-risk students and for families who have opted for remote learning for their children at this time. So again, all schools should be in in-person instruction at this time. As I referenced earlier, in terms of the CDC guidance, the expectation is that kindergarten through fifth-grade schools are in in-person instruction five days a week under Plan A or Plan B, if, if they're not currently in Plan A. Our, our goal is that all K through five schools are in Plan A, and that means that all kindergarten through fifth-grade students are in school every day, five days a week. The expectation for middle and high schools at this moment is that they should also be in in-person instruction to the fullest extent possible, up to five days a week, under Plan B. And again, just as a reminder, the difference in Plan A and Plan B, there's one simple difference. In Plan A, that six feet of social distancing is not required, and in Plan B, that six feet of social distancing is required. This is consistent with the CDC guidance, based on where our state is at with its metrics at this particular moment for the sixth through 12th grade students to have that six feet social distancing. We do know there are a few school districts able to have kids in five days a week, that's fabulous, even with the six feet social distancing. We want all schools to have those students in to the fullest extent possible while maintaining that six feet social distancing at this moment. Again, our trends are moving in a, in a positive direction, we are reevaluating this very continually. I think everybody's goal is that all students K-12 are in in-person instruction, five days a week, every day. That is definitely the goal that we're all working, working towards. And again, I, I think our metrics are moving in a very positive direction. I, I will just remind folks that the K through five schools can be in five-day-a-week full person and, in in-person instruction, that is definitely the expectation, and that has been in place since, since October, actually. So I understand that there are approximately 88 districts already that are in Plan A and Plan B, and that's great. And, you know, our expectation is that all schools will be offering in-person instruction at this time. And again, because, you know, from a public health perspective, what we know is that we have to be thoughtful about those critical, strong prevention measures in schools, and it is also very important for children's health and well-being to be in school, from the, from the perspective of their nutrition, their academic well-being, their social emotional well-being, their physical well-being. There are some additional updates in the, in the, in the toolkit, again, that I mentioned that are mainly technical, and they include inserting new up-to-date links for the CDC guidance, some additional clarifying language that has been requested by the field, et cetera. And with that, I am happy to turn it back to you, Chairman Davis, and glad with my teammates to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Chief Deputy, to you and the entire team for these updates on how we're making progress at fighting the virus and continuing to develop additional layers of protection to our students and staff and families. I can't say it with more importance, it is absolutely essential that we get our students back into school, every student, every day, into every school. And the board will be considering a resolution that's consistent with this toolkit later in the meeting, which will include adoption of these revisions to the toolkit. And that resolution essentially says that we expect every district and charter school by the end of March to be out of Plan C and into at least Plan A and B, with the preference for A in all of our elementary schools. And we want to follow up that quickly, as soon as the health parameters permit, that we move all to A and completely out of, out of B. So we look forward to further updates from you and, and for discussion of that resolution later in our meeting. This time, I'll open the floor for questions from my colleagues. Ms. White.
Thank you to the DHA team for all of your work over the last year, it was so appreciated. I am looking for additional clarity, contradiction between new testing being available to the ESUs of our state and charter schools and the accelerated vaccination for teachers. So why would teachers in our, or adults in our school environment who qualify as, as already qualified for the vaccine, why would we need to do additional testing after they've already been vaccinated? To me, that suggests that there's a lack of confidence in the vaccination. Certainly, there will be adults who choose not to get the vaccine because it's their choice to do so, but those that would be at risk of contracting the virus, who have had the vaccine, wouldn't be at risk for getting the virus or having severe complications with the virus. So I, to me, the, the suggestion is contradictory, and the other thing that I'd like to note is the, the use of the word free for the free vaccines, the taxpayers are paying for the vaccines, and so it's easy to suggest that we can continue to access the, these wonderful tools as you have provided, but they are not free. And over-testing, to me, will end up burdening the American taxpayer in the end if it's not necessary.
Thank you for that question. I think it's a good opportunity to do a little, a little clarifying, so I really do appreciate the question. Agree with you that, you know, I think our use of the word free is in, in relationship to the, the cost to schools, certainly, there is always a cost to, to these, to these tests and to all of these, these measures that we have in place. I'm, I'm going to turn it to Dr. Tilson to talk specifically about the relative value of doing the screening testing in relationship to vaccines. So Dr. Tilson, do you want to talk through that just a little bit?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to. And again, this really gets at the concept of, of layers of protection. And again, this is a, an optional thing that schools can, can opt into, not a required, not mandated, but an optional layer of protection. And I think there's a couple of different things in there. One, as you said, that not everybody is going to accept the vaccine. So we do know, even if it's available, there will be people who are not vaccinated and, and able to spread, so that's one added layer of protection. The second thing, as good as these vaccines are, and these vaccines are really good in preventing death and hospitalizations, they are not 100% in, in preventing infections. And we are learning more and more that they do seem to be actually pretty darn good at preventing that asymptomatic infection and spread, but not 100%. So the vaccines are not 100%. So this is an extra layer of protection that we can add on to, or that schools can opt into, to add on. So it is not meant as a way to invoke lack of confidence in the vaccine, but just that nothing is 100%, and that all these layered prevention strategies only increase the, or lower the risk as much as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Tilson.
Other questions or comments?
This is Olivia, Chair Davis, I have a question.
Dr. Oxenden.
The one, the one shot by J&amp;J that's been developed and is now available by J&amp;J, do you, do you see that as a trend with the other pharmaceuticals companies, the one-shot?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question, do I, are you kind of blurred out a little bit when you talked about the other pharmaceutical companies?
Well, I'm, you know, with the J&amp;J development of the one, I suppose, one and done vaccination, do you see that as a trend?
Oh, as a trend? I'm sorry, I just didn't hear the, the noun. Well, the other, the AstraZeneca, that one has a two-dose, it's still a two-dose. So right now, I'm not seeing a big trend of it, and that's one of the beauties of this, of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, is, is our frontrunner for one dose. The other ones in the mix, most of them are still two doses as well.
Thank you.
True.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question is this, what metrics need to be in place in order for the toolkit to be updated to indicate three feet as an acceptable social distancing measure in grade six through 12? Because when I, when I look at the, the slide with cases per 100,000 by age group, it's in a zero to 17 band. And right now, what we're, what, what the toolkit says is that our, basically, our 11 to 18-year-olds need to be six feet of social distancing, which in practical terms means that our, certainly our high schools are relegated to Plan B. And I want to be very clear that it's And I want to be very clear that it's really easy for us to, when we talk about eliminating Plan C, it's really clear just to talk about A and B together as though they are the same thing. And I know that no one really believes that A and B are both adequate. I understand that. But we need to be very careful that we are not suggesting that Plan B is adequate. It is not adequate. It's not, because Plan B essentially for middle and high school students means that they are in class with their teachers 20% of the time. And we know that that's not working. So what metrics need to be in place in order for our middle and high school students to be able to have three feet of social distancing instead of six?
Thank you for that question, Superintendent Truitt. And, you know, appreciate the desire that I think we all share for all kids to be in full in-person instruction five days a week. And you're absolutely right that while right now, K through five can and should be doing that, right now, our guidance, again, consistent with the CDC guidance, is that the sixth through 12 graders do maintain that six feet social distancing at this particular time, given where our state metrics are in relationship to the CDC levels of community transmission. Again, I would say those levels are coming down very quickly. We are keeping a close eye on the variants and the strains and their impact on our case rates and percent positivity. But right now, you know, I think our trends are moving and our metrics are moving in the right direction very rapidly. And, you know, we are looking to hopefully, as Chairman Davis said, be able to make additional moves forward on our middle and high school students being in full person instruction five days a week as well. You know, I will point out that, again, the rationale there is really what the science has told us about the relative rate of transmission among different ages of children. So while our older children tend to transmit in the same way that adults do, younger children have much lower rates of transmissibility, and that's why you see that difference there in the CDC recommendation and our recommendation. So we've always looked at a combination of metrics relative to our hospital capacity, which is good, relative to our total number of cases per 100,000, and our percent positive all being in a very positive direction. And I think that we share the goal of wanting to make that move forward just as quickly as it is safe to do so.
All right.
Please.
So is there a single metric that the DHHS or a single piece of guidance that DHHS is looking for from the CDC that will allow DHHS to change the toolkit to allow for three feet of social distancing?
Yeah, thank you for that question. We've certainly gotten that question about, you know, just exactly the precise metric. I will say, you know, even the CDC guidance, you know, lays out the metrics, and they do, again, they have those low, moderate, substantial, critical levels of spread, and they are looking at either the cases per 100,000 or the percent positive. We in North Carolina have always, you know, looked closely to that guidance, but also looked at our own combination of metrics, which are, again, the percent positive, hospitalizations and hospital capacity, and our case rates. So we'll continue to look at that combination and, you know, try to make good decisions based on that, based on all of that data as we go forward. So we've always said there's, you know, not one single number. It is looking at the relative strength of the prevention measures, the rate of community transmission, and making good decisions as we move forward.
Thank you. I appreciate the response, but would encourage DHHS to make public its benchmarks for what three feet of social distancing, when three feet of social distancing is allowable. I think that DHHS owes it to our teachers and our parents and our students to make clear when it will be acceptable for all children to be in school five days a week. Is it the number of teachers who are vaccinated? Is it the population across the state who are vaccinated? Is it the hospital capacity metrics? Is it the number of cases per 100,000? Is there a certain metric there? I think we need more clarity. We can't keep pushing. It feels like we're pushing the goalpost. We're pushing this further and further, kicking the can down the street, I guess, is the metaphor I'm looking for. And it just continues to be an exercise in frustration for our local superintendents to continue to have toolkit updated and guidance issued that doesn't really change anything. So I thank you for your willingness to be as transparent and open as is possible, which the department has been. But it's time for you all to put a stake in the ground and say, this is what needs to happen in order for kids to be back in school. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Chair, really briefly, to Ford.
Mr. Ford?
Hey, thanks again. I have just two quick questions. One is, and if this has already been covered, forgive me, are we keeping a running tracker of the actual teachers, the percentage of teachers who have been vaccinated? And then, secondly, the layers and the things that would be required to receive free COVID tests? Has there been any consideration for district capacity? Certainly, the larger districts, midsize, I know could pull off a lot of these partnerships and coordination, but I just wonder if some of the smaller, more rural districts would be able to coordinate all eight of these, these eight of these requirements in order to be able to qualify? So those are my two questions.
Thank you for those questions. They're great questions. I would just say a couple of things. One is, you know, we have some rough ways of looking at the total number of educators, and I do want to stress that, you know, we hope our vaccines are getting to our teachers, but also all of our school personnel, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers. So we have some rough ways of looking at that based on the data that we have at the state. You know, we're looking at, you know, additional ways that we might partner with a DPR in our districts to try to get an even better handle on that data. So we don't have really great numbers, truthfully. And as Dr. Tilsen shared earlier, the number we have, we believe, is, you know, underrepresented because we don't have great ways of knowing for sure exactly how many of our school staff and childcare staff have been vaccinated. As far as the additional layer of protection, the screening testing that we presented on earlier, obviously, again, just want to emphasize, this is an optional additional layer that schools may opt into. I think your point is well-taken. Not all schools will choose to do so. Not all schools may have the capacity to do so. We have had quite a number of schools who chose to do so in the pilot and have had relatively positive results. But again, it is an optional, an optional additional layer.
Thank you for that.
Other comments or questions?
Chair Davis?
It's a pleasure.
Thank you very much. This may sound like a comment, a question, or a criticism, but in my world, you can't manage what you can't measure. And we are all dealing with this, not just as it relates to being school board members, but Superintendent Truitt's dealing with it as an employer of people, as I am and as others are. And this, the notion that we don't know who has or hasn't been vaccinated, if I heard that correctly, if I heard incorrectly, I apologize. It just sets up so much ambiguity so that these decisions are become driven by emotion and not fact. And I'll add to what Superintendent Truitt said and others have said, that every minute of every day that this goes on, COVID is creating death, but not getting kids back in school is creating poverty and illiteracy, which, if you have my background, will know that sometimes will take generations to overcome. And we cannot be on the wrong side of history on that. Thank you.
Comments or questions?
This is Olivia once more, Chair Davis. I want to go back to the response a few minutes ago prior to the treasurer's comment about not being certain of the number of staff, educate, well, teachers and staff who've been vaccinated. Let me make sure that I understand this correctly. Let me pose this. Are school districts not keeping count themselves for their own benefit, just for their own internal understanding of the facts, so that they can make decisions or provide information to health departments or up to Raleigh or to, let's say, the State Board of Education would have a reason to call in that kind of information? Are school districts, I find it hard to imagine that school districts aren't at least jotting down names, grade levels, schools where they, where teachers work, or locations such as cafeteria workers. That seems like such a gap in what we're doing in reporting. Or maybe I've misunderstood the whole point. And if I have, I do apologize for taking up time.
Well, Dr. Oxendine, I'm not aware that the state board or the department or superintendent have issued that requirement upon our districts or charter schools to track or monitor their employees vaccinated. Superintendent, am I correct in that statement?
You're correct, Mr. Chair.
No, no, I'm not pointing the finger at any one agency. I'm just saying, going back to, like I say, I may have misunderstood this. It's hard, when DHS, the officials presenting today said that they had no way of knowing how many teachers or educational staff members have been vaccinated. I mean, would that not, I mean, who would be responsible for that data collection? I suppose is my question.
Chairman Davis, this is Susan Calperry. I'm happy to let Dr. Tilsen talk a little bit about the way data collection happens at the point of care when an individual gets a vaccine. I will just say, I do want to be thoughtful here and be clear that while, you know, our childcare workforce and our K-12 workforce is currently eligible for a vaccine, vaccines are not a prerequisite to safely opening classrooms. So I do want to be clear on that. But, Dr. Tilsen, I'm happy for you to talk a little bit more about the data collection from the perspective of vaccine providers.
Yep, I'm happy to. So remember, we have a pretty heterogeneous group of our vaccinating providers, and we get in data into our CBMS, that's our tracking system, through several different ways, including through some of our federal programs, where they are submitting data up into the federal government, and then we get a file from that data through our hospitals, where we're doing an integration with the EHR. Through our retail programs, we're getting data in from some different ways. And so the granularity of really understanding who is a teacher, or who is a childcare staff, or who is another school staff, that granularity of the occupational data, we will not be able to get that consistently across all of our different providers with the data that we are coming in. What we will be getting is group, knowing that you are group three, a frontline essential worker, but that level of granularity, that sounds like you're thinking about, we will not be getting it, we will not get that consistently in our data collection. We will be getting group. The other thing that I would just say and caution is also think through, this is personal health information, this is health information, and so there is that issue around privacy and people's health information. And so if you're thinking about, even at a district level, thinking through some of those privacy concerns at that individual level in some of that data collection.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, this is the treasurer. Just one brief moment, please.
Yes, sir.
To tell you about the second and third standard deviation of this whole topic, we've reopened the treasurer's office as of last Monday, for example, and 50% of the exemptions for people returning back to our campus to work are associated with their inability to get their kids in public schools. So it's not just the poverty and illiteracy that this is creating, it's the other unintended consequence of the fact that when the kid, child is not in school, the parent can't get back to work. Secondly, on top of that, going back just to the comments that were made just a moment ago, it's another reason that people don't come back to work and they put on their exemption form is that they live in a household with an older person. When we ask the question, has the older person been vaccinated, we're told that you're not, you can't ask that, you're not entitled to that information. So it's my way of, in a kind way, I guess, of showing the members of this board the real vortex that we're in here. And it's why I support the superintendent when she says, we need definitive, a definitive roadmap about how this is going to work, because it's not just impacting the kids who aren't able to get back into the classroom. It's also impacting the parents who can't get back to work because their kid's not in the classroom. I know that may have been a blind glimpse of the obvious for everybody listening to this, but I just wanted to tell you because it's real. It's real. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. White?
One final comment. I just took a quick walk over to the DHHS dashboard, and I am having a hard time putting my fingertips on the mortality rate of students 0 to 17 that have been impacted by the virus in the past year. I can't find that data, but just to add another query to superintendent's metrics, it would be interesting to know whether your recommendations are coming from preventing death of students 0 to 17, preventing infection, or preventing hospitalization. What is it exactly that we're looking for? Because there are other infections out there that get students out of school, but to prevent all of the students across the state of North Carolina with the opportunity and the choice to return to classroom day to day. Would be interesting to have access to that data. I see the latest update from February 26 that suggests that 3% of students in the 0 to 17 have been hospitalized. So not of all students in the state, but 3% of those with confirmed COVID cases.
This is Dr. Tilsen. I'm happy to chime in with some of that. So one, yes, the death rate and the hospitalization rate for our pediatric population overall is very, is very low, which is a really good thing. I believe we've only had two or three pediatric deaths in the state through the entire pandemic. So that is really good, and so that death rate, for sure, is very low amongst our pediatric population. What we do know, though, is that there are, there is some risk of hospitalizations for children with... for, um, children with, um, some underlying health related conditions, underlying medical conditions. There are things that put children at higher risk of, of hospitalizations. But overall, it is, um, quite low in our pediatric, um, population. And again, that rate of spread is relatively low as well, especially for those elementary school children as opposed to the middle and high school children. So some of it is, um, preventing that spread, especially in our older kids. And then also, um, um, helping to prevent spread, um, in the community as well.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Superintendent?
Thank you. I, uh, have had a, one of our rural superintendents reach out to me with these date, with, with these data. Today, one in 900 employees is out with a positive test, which is a point one infection rate. Six of 5,700 students are out with a positive test. That's a point oh five infection rate. Yet half of his secondary students are sitting at home. To the treasurer's point. So I, for me, the math is just not adding up.
Any other comments?
Chairman Davis, this is Deputy Secretary Perry. And I just, I want to say, you know, I, I hear the, the frustration and the desire for all of our kids, K through 12, to be in, in full-time, five-day-a-week instruction. I just want to say that we share that goal and share that desire. Uh, I'm grateful to all of the districts who have, uh, taken positive steps to reopen carefully and thoughtfully, um, with the mitigation measures in place. They've done, I, I think, a, a heroic effort in that regard. And a, again, laying out the expectations that all of our districts will take those steps forward. Um, we're, we're making steady and positive progress. I know we all want to get there as quickly as possible. Um, rest assured that we at the department will, will continue to look closely and try to stay, you know, very guided by what, what our public health leadership across the country and the world are saying. And, um, here in North Carolina are saying. And, and be guided by our, our data as well. And, and again, I would say all signs point in a very positive direction. And, and we hope to be able to ma, be making strides forward, um, in the same direction that everybody here spoke so eloquently to, um, very quickly. So thank you, Chairman Davis, for this opportunity to present today.
Thank you, Chief Deputy, to you and, uh, our partners in DHHS. Clearly, the board's desire is to get all our students into school in Plan A every day in every school. And while today we have before us an opportunity to approve the toolkit and a resolution to, to, uh, move all districts and charter schools out of C and into A and B, we look forward to approving movement in all into A. And we stand ready to have a special called meeting, um, anytime. It's, there's that opportunity to make that important step over the finish line. So thank you so much. All right, next, I'd like to call on Superintendent Truitt for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I, I want to, um, share some, some, some good news. Last week, I had the opportunity to, um, travel with some of my colleagues to Surrey County to, um, uh, visit the community college there. And to see how they are partnering with their early college high school. Um, and, and to look at all of the amazing workforce development initiatives that are, that are going on there. Um, I got to meet a couple of students who already, um, even though they've not graduated from high school yet, um, already have workforce credentials that would allow them to get a job, if that's what they choose to do. Or to stack their credentials into a, um, a four-year degree. And so they've already gotten an incredible jumpstart on, um, what would otherwise be a very, very expensive four-year residential college experience. Um, the, the innovation that is going on in, in that county due to local partnerships with, with businesses is just absolutely incredible. And a, a testimony to, um, the pockets of excellence that we have all across our state. And so I just wanted to, to, to thank, um, those good folks for hosting us and, and showing us really what is possible even in the face of the pandemic. Um, I'm very excited to share with, with everyone the, um, the great news that I've had two new team members join this week. Um, if you'll recall, I've been speaking a lot about three new advisory positions that I created back in January, um, when I assumed this role. And those three positions are special advisor to the superintendent on educator engagement through teachers, educator engagement, um, through principals, and also workforce engagement through employers. These three voices, teachers, principals, and employers are crucial as we seek to not just make improvements that, that need to be made due to, um, uh, you know, as we start to, to recover from, um, from the learning loss that's happened through, because of COVID. But also just the improvements, um, that we need to make in general in the way that we communicate with our external stakeholders, including the governor's office and the, the general assembly. Um, the more feedback from the field, from those in the trenches, our teachers, our principals, our employers, the better. And so this effort to create a continual feedback loop i, is something that, um, we will continue to report on in our superintendent's reports each month. I'm thrilled to say that Julie Pittman, who is a former regional teacher of the year and ex officio advisor to this board, um, is with us today. And, uh, will be sharing some things with you in a, in a moment. She's been with the team since the middle of January. And I'm also thrilled to say that, um, Mr. Tabari Wallace, who is a former statewide principal of the year and advisor to the state board, uh, has, um, left his post and as a principal in Craven County and has joined this team as the special advisor to the superintendent on principal engagement. Um, also Christie Van Aken, who is a former RDU airport executive and most recently with the Research Triangle Park Foundation, uh, has joined us as of this week, um, as the special advisor on, um, workforce engagement. So really thrilled to, to announce that they've started this week. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to, um, Julie Pittman to share with us what she has been working on in her new role.
Good morning, Chairman Davis, Vice Chairman Duncan, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, Treasurer Falwell, Superintendent Truitt, board members and colleagues. My name is Julie Pittman, and I am honored and humbled to be here with you this morning. Superintendent Truitt asked me to share with you today some vision and insight for the role of a special advisor to the superintendent for educator engagement. First and foremost, you should know that I have been a teacher most of my life. From some of my very first memories as a child playing school with my baby dolls in my bedroom, mirroring what my own mother, a lifelong elementary school teacher, did on a daily basis, to teaching in higher ed at our own UNC Chapel Hill, as well as at NYU and at Rutgers University when I lived in New York City, to working as an adjunct professor at Central Piedmont Community College, to finally answering the call to dedicate almost 20 years of my life to being a public school teacher as an English teacher in Rutherford County at our central high school. Teaching is a family affair. Both of my brothers are teachers. One of my sisters-in-law is a teacher, all here in North Carolina in public schools. My mother-in-law and husband are former public school teachers. Along with being a mother to my twin 11-year-old daughters, teaching is what I was born to do. I think it speaks volumes to Superintendent Truitt's North Star of having a highly qualified, excellent teacher in every classroom, that she is valuing the relationship between student and teacher as the most important relationship in education. This is actually why we are all here. Our vision for what this role will do is threefold. To align strategies, to build and grow partnerships, and to create systems of communication between teachers and what we do here at the agency, the board, and overall as a system of education. I'm working hard in the first 90 days to bring the voice of teachers to everything that we do. So let's start with strategy alignment. Along with what my colleague Freebird McKinney has already built throughout COVID and beyond in district-wide visits, we are working with our regional case managers and local superintendents to grow these district visits and voices. During the month of March, we, along with some members of the board, deputy superintendents, oftentimes members of the general assembly, will visit 18 school districts or charter schools to listen and learn about COVID response and recovery. Plans for meeting the myriad of needs of their students, staff, and communities, and how we can connect practice to policy. For instance, in this slide, you see images from our trip to Watauga County schools. Superintendent Scott Elliott talked with us about how one of his aging pre-K through eight schools worked to address the social emotional needs of their faculty to mitigate fear and support them so that they could be ready and armed to meet the needs of their kids before they came back face to face. And then, um, also after the kids were in the building, the Watauga County Schools lead nurse developed a detailed, but not difficult, process for contact tracing and student-staff monitoring. The key thing that we learned in this district is that by following CDC guidelines, building in layers of support for staff and students, robust advocacy and communication about bringing staff and students back into the building, and strong teacher PLCs will yield more sound educational experiences for everyone in Watauga County. How will we know when we are successful in these visits and voices? Will be how many of these visits we're able to make? How we will connect practice to policy? And how we will inform what we do by understanding the needs and best practices from the field? Partnerships. The focus of the partnership work is to build new partners for supporting teachers or growing the support of partners we already are working, that are already working with teachers. Already, we've been working with our partners at New Teacher Support Program and some of our EPPs to align their understanding and practice with the great working resources that our departments here in this agency have already created and are continuing to create. Uh, in this slide, you see the, the great work that some of our new teacher support programs are doing um, with our beginning teachers all across our state. How will we know when we are successful in this? Is how many new partnerships we'll be able to make? And how we're able to robustly grow the current partnerships to create greater support for our teachers at all levels across the state? And finally, communication. There are so many great things we are doing to build greater communication to and from teachers in the field. First, at the end of our district visits, I, along with Maureen Stover, our current teacher of the year for North Carolina, are hosting a series of virtual roundtables with teachers. Currently this month, we're visiting at least one district in each of our eight educational regions. And the roundtables, um, that are with the district teachers of the year from that region, along with a roundtable with several of our charter school teachers of the year when we visit our charter school later this month. Those roundtables are to do two things. Number one, have teachers help build a system of communication for teachers in my office as the liaison to the, to the agency and the board. And number two, to garner input for how teachers can have the most impact on what we do. Already, the two that we've had, that we've conducted this week have given us great information. I'm working with our comms team to build a bi-weekly newsletter that all of our teachers can opt into and get, and get in their inbox every other week. You can see the first, um, an image of the first one that's also linked here in this slide. And people can access the link to subscribe for delivery. The newsletter will have spotlights on teachers, links to best practice and information, hot topics for teachers, and insights on how work around education impacts the classroom. Additionally, I'm working on testing out this month a texting feature with teachers to get data on what's on their mind. Already this week, in the two days we've, uh, tested this, and over 100 responses, you can tell that 80% of the respondents are concerned about two things. Testing and accountability, or issues related to COVID teaching, learning, and student support. How will we know we're successful? Will be the numbers of teachers who collaborate and engage with this work that we're doing through communication, how we build more trust in what we do, and how we transparently communicate with the great teachers of our state. I'm excited to do this work and serve our state, to visit every district in our state, and to help give teachers a voice in everything that we do. I'm equally as excited to work with our other advisors like Tabari Wallace and Christie Van Aken. And I look forward to working with Freebird McKinney as the Director of Government and Community Affairs to bring you a community affairs update at next month's board meeting after our 18 district, um, and charter events in the month of March. And continue to bring the stories from our communities, schools, teachers, and students to you going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julie. That was, uh, just, um, uh, uh, such a heartfelt presentation. Um, I love your story, you know that. And there is no one better for this job than you. I think it is, um, worth noting that so often, teachers feel as though, um, policy is being done to them. And I certainly felt that way when I was teaching in Johnston County. So, um, this is, um, certainly part of, of our attempt to lessen that feeling and to give teachers a voice whenever possible. So thank you so much for being willing to take up this mantle. Mr. Chair, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Superintendent Truitt. Um, today we have a, um, special session that, um, I think is, um, probably going to be the highlight of our meeting. Uh, Ms. Jill Camnetz, the Chair of the Student Learning and Achievement Committee, has arranged this learning opportunity for the board and public. Today, we have the distinct pleasure of hearing from Professor David Moss from Harvard Business School. And I'll turn to Ms. Camnetz for this introduction.
Thank you, Chair Davis. A few weeks ago, several of us from the board and from DPI had the pleasure of spending a virtual hour with Dr. David Moss. As Chair Davis said, a professor at the Harvard Business School and the founder of the Case Method Institute for Education and Democracy. Case method teaching has been the core pedagogy at Harvard Business School for decades, favored by students and teachers alike. In 2013, Dr. Moss introduced a case method course outside the business school called History of American Democracy. It's probably an understatement to say that it was hugely successful. Since 2015, the Case Method Institute has brought the course to high schools and colleges, even a legislature. The methodology presents a unique opportunity to help reverse the broad decline in civic education and civic engagement in the United States by offering students and teachers a more exciting, relevant, and effective experience while engaging with topics in history and democracy. Today, the project is working with teachers in more than 300 public, private, and charter schools in 44 states, providing workshops and supporting materials for over 750 teachers. The revol, excuse me, the results are very strong, with students and teachers indicating that the case method is a highly effective teaching approach that increases student energy and engagement in a diverse array of history, civics, and government classrooms. We're pleased and excited that Dr. Moss is with us today to share the work of the Case Method Institute with our colleagues and listeners. Dr. Moss, welcome to, virtually to North Carolina.
Oh, wow, thank you for that really kind introduction. Um, I'm looking at, it looks like, uh, we're going audio only. So I'll, uh, stay consistent with that unless, uh, unless you all advise otherwise. Um, so let me just say that it's really just a great honor to, to be here this morning. And I'm grateful, really grateful for the opportunity to be able to present to you about the, the work that the Case Method Institute and our, uh, that we've been doing and, and particularly our American history curriculum. So over the, the past several years, um, we've, we've really had the chance to test an entirely new approach to teaching history and civics. And it's based on the case method and a new case-based, uh, curriculum that I'll, that I'll tell you about. We've, we've worked with teachers as part of an initial pilot and, and now beyond that, worked with teachers to bring this to many hundreds of high schools, high school classrooms across the country. Uh, so far in 45 states, including North Carolina. But, um, we're, we're, we have a few more states to go. The results have been, I would say, beyond our wildest expectations. Results with, with respect, not only to academic performance, which we're so excited about, critical thinking, argumentation skills. argumentation skills, and so forth, but also civic interest, civic knowledge, civic engagement on the part of the students. So we've seen these results across every type of school, public district schools, public charter schools, private schools, urban, rural, suburban schools, Title I, non-Title I, from really the most challenged schools around to the most privileged and everything in between. So what I'd like to do, I was told I have about maybe 45 minutes to talk, what I'd like to do over that time is, is to talk with you about just a few things. First, what this new case-based curriculum is and how it came into existence. Second, the ways we partner with teachers to bring our cases and the case method into their classrooms. And, and finally, what the extensive data that we've collected, and we've collected extensive data on the outcomes, what it tells us so far about the impact of this new approach to teaching history and civics for both students, particularly for students, but also for teachers. We've seen impacts quite significant on both. So I'm glad to answer your questions at any point along the way. I, I would say that if you want to jump in, I can't see you, so just jump in and, and, you know, let me know you want to, you want to talk. But otherwise, I'm also, I think we might have a little bit of time at the end, and I'm glad to take questions at the end as well, but, but just don't, don't hesitate about that. So with that said, what I thought it might be helpful to do is start with just a little bit of background, both about, about me, but more importantly, about the new curriculum, and then move on from there. So I, I hope that all sounds okay. And again, along the way, if there's any problem with the audio or anything like that, just jump in and let me know. So to begin, at the beginning, I first saw the power of the case method and case method teaching when I started as an assistant professor at Harvard Business School in 1993, quite a long time ago, and that was one year after finishing my PhD in American history. And I'll say that I love teaching in graduate school, but teaching by the case method when I got to Harvard Business School, teaching by the case method really felt a different, entirely different. There was, there was more energy, more excitement in the classroom. The fact that every case ended at a decision point, so every class session revolves around a, a special, specially-designed case study, gives a lot of background, but ultimately ends at a decision. Now, in most of the business school classes, it's a business decision. In, in the cases I'll tell you about, it's a little bit different, but ends at a decision and then doesn't say actually what decision was made, so it kind of leaves the decision in the hands of the students, and then often at the end of class, we tell them what happened. But, but that decision focus, the focus on a decision point, really draws students in, it focused their attention. I must say, I was also struck by the fact that I could engage students in the classroom in multiple different ways at the same time. So on the one hand, I was working with students one-on-one, even though it was a class of 90 students, one-on-one through intensive Socratic questioning that I, that I would conduct. So I'd go back and forth, I'd ask them questions, whatever, you know, argument they were trying to make, I would help them try to refine that, I'd ask follow-up questions about evidence and so on, and this turns out to be just enormously powerful, developed for developing critical thinking skills and helping students to, to question their own assumptions and, and their preconceptions. And, and so, again, the back and forth, that one-on-one Socratic questioning, enormously important, and I can say, I really saw their critical thinking develop over the course of the term, it was, it was really evident. At the same time, the case method classroom is also highly conducive to deliberation and teamwork, as students are building on each other's ideas and, and comments, they're debating with each other, and they're, and they're trying to figure out their own take of the, on the material, and they're trying to figure out what decision they would have made, and also trying to learn from others and convince others. So there's that deliberative element that, that is simultaneous, really, with the one-on-one Socratic questioning. Now, I have to admit, I didn't know it at the time, but the essentials of case-based teaching turn out to be extremely consistent with what a, a large amount of education research has shown to be many of the most effective teaching strategies available, teaching that is interactive, question-based, deliberative, problem-focused, and so forth. So that wasn't obvious to me at the time because I didn't know that literature, but, but what was obvious to me is that it worked. Students were enormously engaged in these case method discussions, they were learning, and they were learning not only the material, which they were learning well, but, you know, and the, and the test showed that, but they were learning how to think, and they were learning how to engage more effectively with one another. So the first class I taught, the first course I taught by the case method when I arrived in that school year of 1993, 94, was a required course on political economy and macroeconomics called Business, Government, and the International Economy. It's remains a required course at Harvard Business School, and I had done a joint program, actually, I told you I, I got my PhD in American history, which is true, but I also did a joint program with economics in graduate school. So I, I, I felt like that course was, was made for me, I had a great time teaching it, and I, I taught it for, for many years. In fact, they, more years than most other faculty, they didn't let me out right away, but I, I taught that for a long time. Finally, a few years after getting a tenure in 2006, for a variety of reasons, I decided I wanted to create a new, a new course, a new case-based course on financial history. And it, you know, I, there, I was interested in the, in the subject, I also had a little bit, some concerns about the financial system, and so I thought, of course, that I looked at the, at a series of financial crises, but also on the development of some key instruments and intermediaries and institutions would be helpful. And it took a few years, a couple of years, to write at least drafts of the initial cases, and I finally started teaching this course in the spring of 2008. And it was called Creating the Modern Financial System, but of course, in 2008, the spring of 2008 is just as the global financial system was starting to melt down, and the students jokingly called it destroying the modern financial system. Fortunately, we've gotten past that. The course turned out to be extremely popular, more than I could have possibly expected. It was massively over-enrolled, it was a lot of fun to teach, and in fact, it's still a lot of fun, I'm teaching it this semester, I teach on Mondays, Tuesdays, and some Wednesdays, so Thursday, your, your meeting turned out to work, work well. Teaching it, having a great time teaching it. But along the way, as I was teaching that financial history course, I realized not only is the case method effective as a general teaching strategy, but it turns out to be just an extraordinarily effective way to teach history. And I want to dwell on this point for, for just a moment, because I really can't overstate how significant this is, that, that this turns out to be a tremendously powerful way to teach history. Teaching history by the case method is, by far, the best way that I've ever seen for conveying the profound contingency and uncertainty of history. You know, history obviously is normally taught looking backwards, and that's understandable, but life is lived looking forward, you know, with the future being full of uncertainty. We never know what's going to happen next, and naturally, that was true of the historical figures we're studying. You know, you never quite know what was going to, they didn't know what was going to happen next, they didn't know what decisions they'd face, and so on. So when history is taught looking backward, it really can feel lifeless and even irrelevant to students, and that's a shame, and so that's something that had always concerned me. And what I learned in teaching history by the case method is when you ask students to confront the decisions that key historical figures faced, and you don't immediately tell them what happened, you, you leave a little bit the pressure on them, they feel viscerally the uncertainty, the contingency of history. And this is really much truer to how history was actually experienced, but it also makes it far more meaningful and relevant to students who are studying it today, because their lives are uncertain, they see the future as uncertain, the decisions they have to make, they don't know what the results will be, and so thinking that other figures in the past faced the same challenges, seeing how figures wrestled with that, seeing the contingency of history, makes it both more real as history and more relevant to the students. Now, I can tell you that many of my MBA students who had majored in history in college told me that this was by far the best approach to history they'd ever experienced, and that all history courses should be taught this way. Now, the students may have been exaggerating a bit, remember that I was grading them, I was their professor, so maybe they were being extra kind, but, but I really, I really do think that the sentiment was, the core sentiment was real, was genuine, and I felt the same thing in the classroom, there was something special going on. Now, from there, starting in 2010, I decided I wanted to create another case-based history course, but a very different one, this one for Harvard, this time for Harvard undergraduates, on the history of American democracy and the history of the republic. And again, it took, it took a few years to develop the cases, and, and I could tell you the reasons why I wanted to develop that course, but for one thing, the, the data out there that I, that I was seeing was showing, giving some warning lights about the health of, of, of American democracy, and I started to try to think about, how do you distinguish healthy from unhealthy democratic governance? And it's a really hard question, because I can tell you at every moment in American history, from, you know, the, the very late 18th century forward, Americans have always thought their America, their democracy, their republic was collapsing, and, and they usually, almost always, were wrong. And so I was trying, when everyone thinks it's in trouble, how do you know really when it's healthy or unhealthy? So one of the, one of the reasons for creating this course is I thought I'd learn a lot from helping, developing these cases with some great co-authors. It took a few years to develop the cases, a series of cases on critical moments in the history of the American republic, and I had the chance to work with some truly wonderful co-authors. I finally started teaching the course in the fall of 2013, when I had drafts of enough of the cases. And once again, it was just a truly extraordinary experience. The new case-based American history course had all the strengths of the financial history course I told you about. Students were incredibly engaged, they got into the history, the, the historical questions in a way I'd just not seen before. They really got the contingency of history, and as one of my colleagues observed, they, they saw history in the present tense, it's a nice phrase, I wish I had coined it, history in the present tense. Once again, I, I saw powerful improvement in the students' critical thinking, their argumentation, their ability to make an argument, use evidence, and so forth. These are the undergraduates now, and I could see it happening over the weeks and months, it was really very clear. Students said again and again that this was the, the best way to teach history, but also beyond all of that, what maybe most surprised me is that students reported feeling more civically interested. They said they were reading, you know, the news, they were, they were more, they were, they were consuming more news, they were interested in political affairs, they were getting more civically engaged, some in nonprofits, some from political campaigns and so on, more interested in American politics, more, more interested, most striking of all, most interested in talking with other students they disagreed with. It was actually pretty sad, one of the things they told me was that, at, at least at Harvard, they felt so often, they were very nervous about talking with students who they thought might disagree with them politically, they were nervous about talking politics because it could degenerate into something negative. And for the first time, they said in this class, they were able to debate really serious, tough topics, and they, they felt, you know, there was never any trouble in that regard, and they got more comfortable, more interested in talking with other students with whom they disagreed. In fact, each year, the course included students from across the political spectrum. Now, I don't want to suggest that this was representative of the United States, a Harvard College classroom probably is a little different, but, but I will say, it was a complete spectrum. If you were to have joined me, you would see people at every part of the political spectrum represented in the United States, and, and, and students said that they were amazed and thrilled, and those words describe my feelings as well, by how productive the discussions were. This is what most struck me. We talked about some of the most sensitive political issues historically, with distance, but very sensitive, difficult political issues. There was not once in the semester, not once in any of the years I taught it, any moment of ranker. There was plenty of disagreement, sometimes pretty passionate disagreement, but no divisiveness, no personal attacks, none of that. Maybe it was the historical distance of the issues we were discussing, and it's nice to start, you know, with the founding, the 18th century, it feels more distant, people get a comfort level with each other. Maybe it was not just the historical distance, maybe it was something else, but the students were able to talk about these sensitive political issues, issues on which there was quite considerable disagreement in the room, and do it in a way, day after day after day after day, that was highly respectful and productive. Now, what I would learn over the next several years is that this wasn't just true of Harvard undergraduates. I've, I've now led discussions of these cases, these history of American democracy cases for the general public, for business leaders, for senior staff in Congress, for state legislative leaders, for state legislators, state lawmakers, but also legislative leaders, majority and minority leaders from many states, red and blue, all in the same room at the same time, and I've seen the same pattern again and again. No ranker, none, zero, never happened, no divisiveness, no personal or partisan attacks, significant disagreement, real passion, serious discussion from across American history, top, key topics, from the Constitutional Convention to the Civil Rights Movement. Again, no shortage of disagreement, but, but, but productive, it was striking to me. And this was true, I just want to make clear, even with the most partisan of audiences. You know, the, the state lawmakers, there was certainly plenty of partisanship, but the senior congressional staff, when I did a number of sessions at the Library of Congress for senior congressional staff, that was probably the most partisan group, and they came from both sides of the aisle, including staff representing some of the most conservative and some of the most liberal members, in the same room at the same time, having a highly productive discussion about key moments and difficult challenges in American history. Now, I'm getting just a bit ahead of the story, because before I ever brought the cases to state lawmakers or congressional staff or the general public, a number of Harvard undergraduates who were taking the course, actually in 2014, ended up, in the fall of 2014, ended up recommending the cases and the case method to their former high school history, government, and civics teachers. So they had good relationships, I guess, with those teachers, and they, they said, you know, you really should try these, these cases. I'll say, they also pretty wantonly violated maybe copyright law by sending the cases, but, you know, it can be forgiven, they, it was really kind of them to share this. And this is how the High School Project got started initially at Harvard, we started at Harvard Business School. It began actually with two high school teachers who said they really wanted to try teaching these cases, one in Indiana, one in Pennsylvania. Both were interested in trying a couple of these cases. I connected with both of them, I shared my teaching plans, which I'd never done outside of Harvard Business School before. I talked through how a class might go, what some of the challenges they might face, and both seemed to have great experiences discussing the cases with their students. So the next semester, in the fall of 2015, we recruited about 20 teachers for a small professional development program at Harvard Business School, where I taught a few of the cases myself to the, to the teachers and talked about case method teaching. And as with everything we've done from that point forward, we provided everything, the professional development program, the hotel rooms, the food, and then, of course, the cases, the teaching plans, all the materials, everything entirely free of charge. Harvard Business School was incredibly generous in that regard, and we've now raised funds so that we can, we can continue to provide this free of charge. And I'll, I'll tell you a little bit later about why that's so important. I think I really want to try to remain committed, if I can, if we can do it, but I'll, I'll tell you more, a little more in a minute, about why that is, I think, so helpful to the teachers. But once again, nearly all of the teachers, and this was just 20 to begin with, ended up reporting extremely positive experiences, so positive that we decided to expand the pilot, we raised some money, and, and we've been running a pilot which ended on June, June 30th of 2020, just last year, and at that moment, when the pilot ended, we've now converted to sort of a full-blown program, but when it ended, we were working with about 350 active teachers in 45 states who had reached about 30,000 students. It was a good, it was a decent-sized pilot, and I'll go over the outcomes, we have good data, and, and I'll go over those outcomes in just a little bit. First, though, I just, before I get to the, the data, I just wanted to tell you a bit more about the work that we've done with teachers, because just to be clear, in everything we do at the Case Method Institute, first at Harvard Business School and then at the Case Method Institute, we've seen teachers as our key partners. They know their students, they know their classrooms, ultimately, they're the most likely to know if a new pedagogy is working in their courses, and as a result, we're not interested, we're never interested in trying to create any requirements on this for teachers. There was one experience early on that we had where a, a really enthusiastic principal more or less directed some of the teachers to, to do this, and that was the one time we saw it not work very well. So the teachers didn't feel, I think, fully invested enough, so we, we want to make the, the option to learn about our program and participate in our program available to as many high school social studies teachers as possible, including in North Carolina, if that's possible. But ultimately, it's, it's vital that it be up to the teacher whether to join the program, whether to use the cases, whether to keep using them. We believe in a market test. We believe in a market test. If teachers choose to participate in the program voluntarily, even though it involves extra work, and I'll tell you, it does involve extra work for them, it's hard, it's not, it's not easy, but if they stay in, if they get in and they stay in, it's a good indication of effectiveness, and the reason they, they get in and they stay in is because it's exciting, it's effective, it's new, if, I'll get to the data later, but their reports about their job satisfaction going up significantly, their enjoyment in the classroom going up dramatically, their sense of professional growth, et cetera. So it's a, it's a big plus for the teachers as well as the students, and so we want them to do it voluntarily. When somebody's doing it in a school, in one classroom, other teachers see it, they want to get involved, that's, that's, that's great. want to get involved, that's, that's, that's great. Beyond that, teachers who choose to get involved are just much more likely to stick with the program because, again, they feel invested in it. So that's one of the reasons it's been so important to us, to be able to provide everything free of charge. Because this way, teachers don't have to ask anyone for funding, they can decide to participate on their own, and they don't have to ask for budget help or anything. Once they've made that decision, again, their odds of making it work, the investment to make it work is, is much higher. So what does this mean in practice? How, how does this work? Teachers who are interested in trying our cases and the case method in their classrooms reach out to us, you know, on our, on our website, or they could come through some other way. Sometimes we work with schools or districts or state agencies which help inform teachers about the option. But again, the decision is always up to the teachers themselves. And we talk individually with every, we have a great team, talk with every single teacher before they participate in one of our workshops to make sure that they really want to do it, they're, they're interested in it, and make sure that they understand exactly what's involved. And from there, the next step for the teacher is really to dive in. Because our program, I'll just, again, be clear about it, it's demanding. For those teachers who want to participate in one of our professional development workshops, whether in person or online, we ask that they commit to try to teach at least four of our cases over the next year. So it's not that they're agreeing to, you know, put an entirely new course in place, although they could do that if they want, a fully case-based course. Most of them though, you know, four cases, sometimes they do five or six cases, but a few cases, and they normally spend three to five days a week on each case. So it's a significant commitment, but it's not an overwhelming commitment, but it's a serious one, and they need to understand that in advance. There's also preparation required for the workshop. The cases, as you've seen, they're challenging, they've got to read the cases, they've got to prepare them, they've got to be prepared to be called on. They're not just going to come and listen. It's an interactive, and I'm going to ask tough Socratic questions, and they have to be ready for that. In the teacher workshops, I lead most of the sessions myself, and so they have to be prepared for that. Before the pandemic, most of our workshops were held in person on the Harvard Business School campus. Now, because that's not currently possible, we've moved all of our professional development programs online. We've been amazed at how well they've been working online. Teachers remain actively engaged, you know, even when they're not getting, you know, really nice meals and nice hotel and so on, you know, and, and in person and lots of engagement. Even online, highly engaged, the net promoter scores continue to be sky-high. I sort of can't believe how high they are. And regardless of whether the programs are conducted in person or online, the centerpiece of all of our professional development workshops are actual case discussions, where teachers see firsthand how these discussions work, and where they personally feel the energy, excitement, and probably some of the anxiety that students feel, or nervousness, sort of nervous energy, nervous excitement, that students feel from getting called on in a classroom and being asked to participate. By the way, participating in a case discussion, just to be clear, isn't just about answering some sort of simple question about a historical name or date. It's about being prepared to go back and forth in an intensive bout of Socratic questioning about an important idea, an argument, historical development, giving evidence, being asked, is that the right evidence? Is there contrary evidence? It's a challenge. And although our workshops are challenging, or maybe, in fact, because they're so challenging, teachers consistently tell us that our professional development workshops and the programs are the very best they've experienced in their careers, again and again and again. And once they've completed one of these initial workshops, whether in person or now online, we provide them with access to all of our cases, all of the associated teaching plans, all of the other materials, again, entirely free of charge, but access to everything so they can decide, not, we're not deciding, they can decide which cases to use, when to use them, how to use them, whether they're going to, hopefully, you know, they'll want to follow the teaching plan, but that's up to them. And so, you know, that's, that's how it goes. As they start teaching the cases, if questions arise, if they run into any problems or difficulties in the classroom, we've got a team of support specialists, and we've been lucky enough to be able to, to fund this, who, who are specialists. These teachers can always connect with any one of these teacher support specialists who are there, on call, to talk with them one-on-one about everything from classroom dynamics to teaching plans. One thing has become evident, where I would say one thing that becomes evident to teachers right away, and I assume it's already evident to you if you've had a chance to take a look at one or more of the cases that, that we shared, it's that our cases are extremely challenging. They're written at a college level, not at a high school level. And when we first decided to bring the cases to high school classrooms, we assumed we'd have to rewrite the cases. And we'd have to, you know, pitch them at a more appropriate reading level. But what we heard from students, both students who are reading at grade level and students who are reading dramatically below grade level, we heard the same thing, which is, don't simplify the cases, don't change, we want the Harvard cases, we want the real thing. And interestingly, we were hearing the same thing from the most experienced teachers in our program, who told us that challenging readings aren't a problem, they're an asset, they're not a liability, even at a college level, in helping to raise reading levels, including for students reading dramatically below grade level. It's an asset, not a liability. They told us that the key was to give students who are reading significantly below grade level enough time and support to be able to get through the case. But it's good to set a high standard, to encourage students to reach, that's what these cases did. Those teachers were right, the students were right, and we've left the, the college-level readings in place. It turned out to be just great advice. Most teachers spend three to five days per case, others, where reading challenges are really a significant issue, may spend longer, sometimes significantly longer. But either way, students are digging into college-level texts, they're making real progress, which obviously means a lot. And we, we do a lot of surveys, I'll tell you about this in a minute. What the students regularly report, you know, I, we get about 700 of these surveys a week, and I, I look through, you know, a good number of them. And the most common comment from the student is, "These cases are hard." The next most common is, "They're too hard." But almost everybody says, whether they say it's hard or they said it's too hard, they also say, "It's a lot better than what they're reading in their textbooks, they prefer it to the textbook even though it's hard." And the discussions made it all come together. The, the class discussions brought it into focus, and, and, and they're very, they give it very positive ratings, even though they immediately tell you how hard the cases are. And there's a lot of pride in working through college-level texts, Harvard cases. As, as for the, the cases themselves, I hope you receive the three samples I shared with you. Of course, I'd be glad to talk about any of them or show others as, as much as you'd like. But I thought, I'm, I'm cognizant of the time, but I thought it might be helpful just to briefly work through one of them, just for a few minutes. If, if that's, if, if anyone who's in charge, the chair wants to, I should speed up, you just jump in.
No, that's perfect. Professor Mawson, lead us through a case, give us that experience.
Great, okay. So if you had a chance to look at the, the case called on James Madison and the Federal Negative, about the Constitutional Convention, again, you'll see it's set at the time of the Constitutional Convention in 1787. And there's a broad decision point in the case, if you will, about what powers to confer on the new federal government. This is what, one of the things they're trying to decide at the Constitutional Convention. And interestingly, when you ask the students, you know, the students in the case, they study sort of from, they see the context in the case from the Revolution to the Critical Period of the mid-1780s, where the country seems to be falling apart, to the Constitutional Convention itself. And when you ask them what powers did the federal government need that it didn't have under the Articles, they end up creating a list that looks almost identical to Article 1, Section 8 of the Constitution. And that's because they're looking at the problems that the country was facing, because we spent a lot of time talking about the problems of the 1780s. And then they see, they, they go through the same exercise as the, as the founders, because the delegates of the Constitutional Convention were focused on those problems and were designing Article 1, Section 8, at least in part, at least in part for that purpose. So the, the students end up, without knowing it, essentially creating that piece of the Constitution. That's sort of the general decision point. You know, what are the kind of minimum necessary powers? They decide the Articles hadn't gone, hadn't quite done it right. But there's also a specific and much less familiar decision point regarding whether to adopt James Madison's other proposal. He, he made a lot of proposals, and he probably wrote more of the Constitution than any other person. But one proposal he made, little known at this point, was called the Federal Negative. He called it the negative, historians have since called it the Federal Negative. And it would have given Congress the power to veto state laws. So that's the frame for the case. This, in the first couple pages, the last couple pages of the case focus on this proposal for a federal negative. And the case ends in early June, 1787, when the, the convention is, is debating this proposal. And of course, the irony is the main notes we have from the convention are Madison's notes. So he's reporting what people are saying about his proposal, and they're debating it, and just, you take them right up to the point when they're about to vote, and then the case ends, and the students have to decide what they would have done. Now, again, as I said, the rest of the case provides kind of a narrative arc from the Revolution through the Critical Period, again, where the nation seemed to be falling apart, to Madison's, by the way, Madison's attempt, there's a good amount of attention to his effort to diagnose what was going wrong. He spent months trying to figure this out, studying history, actually, to understand what had gone wrong under the Articles of Confederation. And finally, to the Constitutional Convention of 1787, where obviously there are many involved, but Madison is a leading, a leading figure. And again, students aren't just asked to identify names and dates, although I will tell you, they, they really learn the names and dates along the way. But, but they try to understand, the goal is really for them to try to understand the problems of the Critical Period stemming in large part from the Articles of Confederation. We want them to think hard about Madison's diagnosis, and why he favored, in fact, strongly favored some, something so, today that seems so extreme as a federal negative, this veto of state laws. And, and we want the students to really step into the Constitutional Convention and see how key proposals and debates were motivated, not only by, you know, big ideas and principles, but also by very concrete challenges of the time. And many of the core themes that emerge, especially stemming from Madison's ideas about the dangers of weak confederations, about small versus large republics, and some of the dangers in his view of small republics, and especially the deep tension that he identified between majoritarianism, the, the idea of empowering the majority on the one hand, and the threat of tyranny of the majority on the other, this desire to protect the rights of everyone, really resonate with the students. And they, they can see the irony of him talking about, he doesn't use the phrase tyranny of the majority, John Adams would use that, and DeTocqueville would popularize it, but he, he gets the idea. And they see the irony of a slave owner talking about tyranny of the majority, when of course he applies it not to race, but to other areas. It'll later be picked up, his ideas, and applied in very different contexts. And you will see some of these ideas, particularly the idea of tyranny of the majority, brought up again and again in numerous moments across American history, as, as teachers tell me, that whether they're using cases or they're teaching other parts of their course without cases, students are bringing up these themes again and again. And they don't just remember, you know, the names, dates, but especially the ideas and the arguments over the school year and the narrative arc. What I can tell you from having taught for more than 25 years at Harvard Business School is that alumni remember the cases they studied and discussed years and even decades later. It's uncanny. I just actually, last week, a student who's now the CEO of a, of a manufacturing company called me about a challenge he's facing related to COVID. And, and, and he referenced a couple of the cases that had stuck with him and he thought were relevant, you know, these are from 1995. And he talked about them like we had, like we had talked about, you know, we had covered them in class just a few weeks before. It's quite remarkable. That was a former MBA student, and I can't promise that exactly the same will be true of high school students. But already, teachers are telling us that students commanded the cases, their ability to recall critical facts and themes from the cases over the rest of the school year, and even in subsequent years, has been exceptional. And I, I can tell you that the more you engage students with Socratic questioning, not trying to tell them what to think, but helping depress them to think more clearly, refine their own thinking, the more you help them develop their ideas, revise and strengthen their arguments through this kind of challenging follow-up questioning and so on, the more they will internalize the key facts and ideas that you're discussing. Again, I've just, I've been doing this a long time, and, you know, I know that to be the case. Again, I want to be utterly clear about this, the goal is not to tell them what conclusions to come to, that is up to them. The cases, the hallmark of a good case, and I hope you see this in the cases, is to present the facts, you know, nothing's perfectly neutral, but in as neutral a way as possible, and to leave the analysis out, leave the analysis for the student. And in the classroom, it's not about the teacher's views, it's about the students grappling with the material, strengthening and sharpening their thinking, helping them to build arguments and support those arguments with evidence from the case. Anyway, this is the goal of the program, and what we're aiming to help teachers to do even more effectively in, in their classrooms. And so far at least, it seems to be working. So just, just before I end, let me just tell you what we've seen in terms of results. And the results, I, I sent you one of our assessment reports, so you'll know this if you took a look, but they're based largely on detailed surveys of students and teachers after every case. We have even more detailed surveys at the beginning and end of, of the course, including when possible surveys of a comparison group of, of, of students who took the similar or identical courses but who didn't use the cases. So we have something roughly like a treatment and control, but not a perfect control, the best we can do. And then there's also detailed interviews with a subset, a sample of teachers. So what did we find? First, teachers overwhelmingly report, and I mean overwhelmingly report, that use of the cases and the case methods strengthen their students' critical thinking skills, they, when, we have lots of examples that they give us of this, strengthen their critical thinking skills, their ability to make evidence-based arguments, their ability to vocalize their opinions, to draw in connections across readings and so on. And again, these are, these outcomes weren't a close call. On a scale of 10, the averages were all above seven, many of them above eight. The average impact on critical thinking was 8.7 out of 10 in our most recent, the 2020 report. It's, these are striking results. The teachers also told us that use of the cases improved students' motivation, their level of effort, their interest in the material, with scores generally near eight or above out of 10. And at the same time, teachers report, again, strongly and by overwhelming margins, that using the cases increased their own job satisfaction, their sense of professional growth, their excitement about teaching, and their confidence in the classroom. Students meanwhile, report that use of the cases and the case method strengthened their experience in class across numerous dimensions, their level of confidence, their ability to think historically, their ability to make an argument, their ability to look at issues from another person's point of view. They also report that it strengthened the overall value of the course they were taking, even though they only used several cases in the course, not, it wasn't the whole course. And in almost every instance, not quite, but in almost every impact that I just referenced, the impact increased with dosage. That is, if they used more cases, if the teacher used more cases, the impact was larger. In addition, as compared to students in comparable courses who didn't use the cases, those who did use the cases reported greater interest in history, greater understanding of major political issues faced in the US, and we've tested that in a number of ways, by the way, greater confidence in their ability to make an argument using evidence, and so on. They also reported, like the Harvard students, had greater interest in civic involvement in the future, such as potentially running for office at higher levels than the comparison group, and also higher levels than the national average. And a significantly larger number of students who used cases as compared to the comparison group who didn't, reported a score of 10 out of 10 on the question of how important is it to live in a country that's governed democratically? This is a question that's asked in surveys all around the world, and certainly extensively here in the US. Normally, young people have a very low rating on this. Normally, it's around 30% will give a 10 out of 10. People who are older will give 50, 60, 70%, young people 30%. That's true at the beginning of the year, but by the end of the year, if they've used the cases, it jumps up quite considerably, as if they had been born, by the way, in the 1950s or 60s rather than in the, in the 2000s. As for test scores, we don't yet have much data on how to use the, how use of the cases affects student performance on test scores. However, a number of teachers, really innovative teachers, have run what are essentially controlled experiments in their schools, where they, they, they gave the same tests to students who were using the cases and those who were not in the same courses. And they found that students who used the cases performed significantly better on tests. The scores are really substantially higher, always on essays, and dramatically higher on the essays, and often, but not in every case, on multiple choice and short answer questions. It's particularly striking that it's even close on the multiple choice and short answer because those are questions that were derived not from the cases, but from the textbook that the students using the cases weren't using for those modules. So they're able to get the, the right answers from what had been from questions drawn from the textbook, even when they're not using it and are using the cases instead. I could go on and on about this, as, as you can tell, unfortunately, but the bottom line is that this new case-based approach to teaching American history and civics in high schools seems to be working, and working remarkably well, both from an educational and a democracy standpoint. Finally, just so there's no confusion about this, the initiative started at Harvard Business School as a pilot project, I'm enormously grateful to them, and with the understanding that if it succeeded, we'd spin it off as a separate nonprofit. The results have been so strong that we did that, we shifted The results have been so strong that we did that, we shifted operations to a new nonprofit called the Case Method Institute on July first of twenty twenty. As you can imagine, there's still a very strong relationship between this high school project, the Case Method Institute, and Harvard Business School. I myself remain on the faculty at Harvard Business School, that's not changed. But the high school project which I've described here is 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 now run through the Case Method Institute, and it's growing even more rapidly as a result. There's there's more ability to grow, especially based on what we've seen in terms of impacts, on students' academic performance, on their civic knowledge and engagement. We're just really tremendously excited about what's possible. And so I'm, I've just been thrilled to have the opportunity to share this with you this morning. I'm sorry if I went on a little long. I don't know if there are time for questions, but if there are, I'm I'm happy to take any questions or comments if I haven't already exhausted you. But thank you for your, you know, making the time and and for listening.
Professor Moss, thank you so much for sharing this incredible opportunity for our students. And by way of your sharing, to extend an invitation to social studies teachers all across North Carolina to take advantage of the Case Methods Institute in helping our students not only learn our history, but also learn how they can be a part of our future. We, by way of endorsement, all I can say is I want to sign up for every one of your courses. And particularly, learning our nation's history through this case method. No doubt, we'd all benefit from from being one of your students. And I'm just grateful for your willingness to share your expertise and your experiences with us and to afford our teachers and all of us the opportunity to benefit from this this really amazing teaching method. Superintendent Truitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Moss, I I echo the the chair's comments. This is the third time I've heard you speak now, and and each time I am just more and more excited about the possibility that this presents for our our teachers across the state. I I would like to to call out for our listeners, if I could quickly, a statistic that is included in the introduction of one of your publications that is entitled "A New Direction for Civics in American High Schools", Harvard's History of American Democracy Course, that was updated this this month, or I'm sorry, this month, a year ago. You cite a a study that was published in the Journal of American Democracy from two thousand sixteen that says that one in four Americans aged sixteen to twenty-four said that having a democratic political system is a quote "bad or very bad way to run this country," unquote. The fact that you have data that suggests that this method, this this pedagogy increases civic engagement is in and of itself reason to do this. The fact that one in four Americans aged sixteen to twenty-four think that having a democratic political system is not a good way to run our country shows that this is something that, at the very least, we need to begin to address as educators in in our state. So I'm so excited for your nonprofit and for our future engagement between it and teachers in our state. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I know we could spend the rest of the day or week in this conversation, so we do have limited time. But I do want to open the floor for my colleagues to offer questions or comments.
Chair Davis, this is Maureen.
Ms. Dover, if you could hold just one moment, I'll be right to you. Lieutenant Governor?
Professor Moss, I just want to say, everything that I heard you say is right up my alley. I was on my way to trying to obtain a degree in history and, well, things happened and I haven't gotten it yet. But I hope to one day be a a professor in some capacity, whether it be in community college, university, it doesn't matter to me. I just, I want to hear myself talk about history. So, but I I really am encouraged by what you said about teaching children how to think because that has been one of the things that I've talked about for for many, many years, not imposing our thoughts on these students, but letting these students open their minds and make their own decisions about what has happened in our history and what they will do in their future. So again, if there's any way I can get there and take one of your courses, I'm definitely going to try to get there because I'm telling you, I'm really, really in favor of everything you're doing and I wish you much success in the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And let me just say, you know, if if there's ever an opportunity to, I I lead case discussions for for lawmakers and policymakers. And if there's ever a chance to do that, I'd I'd love to do it and you'd see what it looks like. And, you know, if, my guess is you got a few things to do and you're a little bit busy. But if you ever wanted to lead one of these, I bet I bet you'd have a great time as well. So love to follow up on that.
Absolutely, I may take you up on that. Thank you.
All right.
We we all may take you up on that. Ms. Dover?
Thank you, Chair Davis. Professor Moss, thank you so much for outlining the case method and how it can be used not only to teach history, but to truly engage our students in the curriculum. I'm a science teacher, but I do use a similar method with Socratic seminars and philosophical chairs to help my kids learn how to have hard conversations, how to engage in academic debate that's based on evidence, and how to model how to have hard conversations that include multiple ideas and viewpoints. This is such an excellent example of how our students need to see themselves reflected in the curriculum and how we can use that authentic learning to enable our kids to take ownership of their learning and truly interact with the curriculum. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for presenting this to us today. I think this is an educational strategy that has a lot of impact for our kids. And I'm so excited to see that Harvard is is engaging with high school teachers to help us teach our students in this way.
No, thank you for that. Yeah, no, it's 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 a thrill to do. And and I'll say that, you know, when students step in and face a decision, not only do they get excited, but they feel empowered. You know, so many students have told me they never thought they could ever, you know, it wasn't up to them to make a decision like that. And and then when they, when they realize, case after case, they really, they can make decisions. And I think that's part of the reason why the the numbers go up on, you know, would you consider running for office in the future? Because they see themselves in that role. So I, you know, it it definitely warms my heart. Thanks for your comment.
Chair Davis? Mr. Chastain?
Yes, Mr. Chastain.
I just wanted to ask a nuanced question for for Dr. Moss. What he shared makes so much sense and just makes teaching and learning aspirational and really appreciate the presentation. And it reminds me some of some of the methods used in some law schools. But the question I have is, did you know, have you noticed students or teachers who are using the case study method may have have an adjustment related to not using or applying chronological snobbery like we can in education? You know, putting today's frame and cultural views and our understandings in twenty twenty-one and applying them to seventeen twenty or some other date? Have you noticed any adjustments or any experiences along that line?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, it might end up being less challenging than than it than it would otherwise be, given that we start at the founding period. So a lot of the, you know, there, at that point, there isn't a Democrat and Republican Party. So they, you know, it doesn't even exist yet. And so it's sometimes a little bit hard for them to map on exactly what their politics are today, for example, or what some of the current issues are that they are focused on with how it, so they have to, in a sense, figure it out. They have to look at what's going on and actually figure it out. And sometimes it affects their thinking about the present. You know, I I try to encourage the students to to really focus on the history. And if they want to talk about how it relates to the present later on after the class, you know, that's great. But but during the class, to really focus on the history. And I and I think if you start early and you work forward, they get accustomed to it. But I think you're right, it is, it is an adjustment. And, you know, hopefully, hopefully, they're looking at 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 the, at the, at the challenges and the problems in it in a in a open way and not not just shaped by, you know, what some current debates might be. And my guess is, when you get around to doing that, that they're they're a lot more informed ultimately about the current debates as well. But if you start early enough, there's enough historical distance that it's, it's a, it's, it's, it's maybe more challenging for the students, as I've said, to sort of map on current challenges to to past ones. And so it it focuses attention maybe in the right way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have time for one more.
Chair Davis, this is Olivia.
Yes, Dr. Oxendine.
Fascinating topic and a couple of things that, comments that you made that caught my ear especially has to do with not diminishing the rigor in the reading. I think that's very important because I, I think students will rise to the occasion if we help them get there. The other question that I would have is if there is any particular kind of training for teachers in terms of how they approach, how they approach the discussion of the cases.
Right, so so we do a fairly extensive workshop and it involves a number of things. So I model teaching the cases. So in the beginning, they sort of are in the role of students and they see what that feels like and they see it. And then gradually over the workshop, we start turning the perspective and saying, you know, why, why ask this question or that question? How do you, how do you do a good follow-up? And we, and we talk about that. We then bring in some teachers who've done this, high school teachers, to talk about their experience and what works and what doesn't. And I'll say, maybe the most encouraging thing from the standpoint of the teachers that I I pretty consistently hear is that student, teachers really see the power of Socratic questioning within the context of the case, but also outside. And so many teachers have told me, even when they're not using the cases, they've seen that they've become much more Socratic in their teaching more generally. And, you know, I I think what, when you do that, it's, it's, at least I have found personally, I found it very exciting because you see students' critical thinking skills improve. I mean, there's just no way around it. And so I think they see that and 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 it's exciting, you know, for them, just like it would be for me or it is for me. So I think there's that learning process. We have a pretty involved workshop and that's sort of launches things. We then have ongoing communications with the teachers. We're now just starting to intro, think about introducing sort of follow-up second round after they've done it a few years to come back and sort of come up with a new set of skills. But we we certainly work on trying to help teachers see both the content of the cases, but but more importantly, the strategy of of teaching. You know, as the, I think it was maybe Mr. Chason who said that, you know, this is used in law schools, a little bit different, they're using usually legal cases, but the same basic idea. And, you know, the notion that the case method, which is used in professional schools, business schools and law schools, to great effect, has basically never found its way into a K through twelve. It's never found its way in in this case into secondary education. It's too bad. It turns out, you know, so we weren't sure when we tried it, but it turns out it works just like it works in the professional schools. So in any case, we certainly do the training and and so far, at least, we seem seems to be working.
For our final comment, Ms. Camnitz.
Thank you, Chair Davis. Dr. Moss, I I echo Superintendent Truitt. Every time I listen to you, I want to go back to school. It's just, it's so exciting. And I also, I have to thank Chair Davis because he is the one who made the initial connection with Dr. Moss. And I think that that's going to be a huge gift to the students and teachers of North Carolina. And and finally, I'd like to suggest to Superintendent Truitt, Truitt, that we get right on this and and let's create a method to disseminate this information across the state to our teachers and get North Carolina on board as quickly as we can to to shifting towards this in the classrooms where the teachers are interested.
Well, that, for for me, that that sounds wonderful. And we would, and now it turns out online, it's easy to run these workshops almost anytime. And so if there are teachers who are interested, if it's possible to get out the word, we'll, we'll meet whatever demand there is. And and we'd be just thrilled, thrilled to do that. So let me just thank Chairman Davis and thank everyone, Lieutenant Governor and 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 the whole, the whole board. I'm I'm grateful for you taking the time and I hope I didn't overstep my bounds on the time. And I look forward to staying in touch and figuring out next steps. So so thank you again.
Well, thank you, Professor Moss. Our only regret is that we have to move on from this side and we could spend the rest of the week on it with you. But thank you for, again, sharing this incredible opportunity. Thank you for joining with us to extend an invitation to every social studies teacher across the state to get in touch with you through your Case Methods Institute. And we look forward to working in partnership with our superintendent to more formalize and deepen our partnership with you. Thanks so much. And speaking of social studies, I'll now turn to our own Social Studies Former Teacher of the Year, Current Legislative and Community Affairs Director, Free Bird McKinney, and his partner, Jamie Falkenberry, for our legislative update. Gentlemen?
Good morning, Chair Davis, Superintendent Truitt, Vice Chair Duncan, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, Treasurer Falwell, Board Members and Advisors, my fellow colleagues here at the Board and DPI, and all of our partners across our state of North Carolina. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today on the Legislative Update for March. As beautifully alluded to by Chair Davis in his opening statement, we are approaching the one-year anniversary of our battle with COVID nineteen. And I look with hope and promise that we are transcending this pandemic. And as we go beyond normalcy in our transition, in our recovery, in our return, I would love to say thank you to each and every school leader, teacher, support staff, superintendent and district personnel for your commitment, your dedication and your passion in serving our students. I also want to say thank you to our parents and our families for your support and your understanding and your grace and collectively working as partners in this process. Our team, including Deputy Superintendents, RCMs and Julie Pittman, as reflected in her new role, have traveled to dozens of districts and witnessed courage, flexibility, innovation and heroism. And at its core, the soul crafting of our students that they deserve and are yearning for. So thank you, Salbona, and we see you. Mr. Falkenberry and I would like to begin today's update by just going over some brief highlights of the last, a little over the last month session. There are overall four hundred and eight bills that have been filed as of March second, a hundred and eighty-three in the Senate, two hundred and twenty-five in the House. This reflects eighty-two total K twelve public education bills and also fifteen, if you include House Bill eighty-two in the calendar flexibility bills. At this point, the major bill education-wise that has been signed into session law is the twenty twenty COVID Relief Bill modifications. This addresses, excuse me, this modifies the state COVID nineteen relief legislation in light of the additional federal legislation and guidance. As always, Mr. Falkenberry and I have added the hyperlink to the bill in and of itself and the bill summary to keep the presentation flowing. And I will hand it off to my colleague.
Thank you, Free Bird. SB thirty-seven, I know that's been in the news lately. The governor vetoed it late last week. And while the Senate failed to override the veto earlier this week, there was a senator who had an excused absence and he said that he could not attend the vote because of work obligations in his professional career. So Senator Berger and the Senate motioned yesterday to bring that bill back forward to be reconsidered. And because of Senate procedure and all that, it was motioned that it can be tabled to be voted on to override the, potentially override the veto again, if that makes sense to everybody. So this Senate Bill thirty-seven has technically not failed veto override because it is, can be calendared at any point the Senate deems it wants to allow it to be up for a veto override vote again.
Moving on to Legislative Update and ed bills that have passed the House unanimously, many of these have also been referred to Rules and Operations of the Senate. House Bill eighty-two, summer learning choice for North Carolina families. This is now currently in Senate rules. House Bill seventy-eight, report on K twelve computer science data. This is also in Senate rules. And House Bill seventy-nine, student digital learning access. As always, Mr. Falkenberry and our team, Carson Nelson and Anne Murtha, if you Falkenberry and our team, Carson Nelson and Anne Murtha, if you have specific questions or, or would like a specific summary to any of these bills, uh, please reach out. You'll, you'll find our email addresses at the end of this presentation and we'd love to follow up with you on, on any that you might, uh, need some extra additional information on. Next slide, our K-12 education bills to watch. Um, currently, the House Bill 152 and Modifying School Performance Grades. Uh, this is in House rules. And I will let my colleague, uh, Mr. Falkenberry, do a little explanation for 159 and Education Law Changes.
This, this one I just want to focus on for the State Board is the agency bill that we have put together after talking to all the departments. It is mostly, uh, date changes or reorganizing technical correct fixes, uh, and also addresses, uh, our residential teachers, our residential school teachers last year were not included in the bonuses that were given out. So that is a technical correction and that, so that they can get their bonuses as well. Uh, if you have any questions about the bill, it's pretty straightforward as of right now, uh, as our agency bill. But as we know, sometimes these bills get other stuff put into them throughout the process. So we'll continue to monitor.
Thank you, Mr. Falkenberry. Moving on, Senate Bill 115, Students, Parents and Community Rights Act. This is actually a local bill. Um, Senate Bill 116, Let Them Play and Let Us Watch. Uh, there's probably, you probably heard a, a lot of talk about this one. This will permit increased access to outdoor sporting facilities in public and, and non-public high schools. And I did there, uh, I did want to bring up three additional bills which have, uh, have started to move as well that are not included in the presentation at this point due to, uh, when the presentation is due. House Bill 192, COVID Response and Supplemental Spending for 2021. This will provide additional funding for the community, for the continuity of operations to supplement COVID-19 relief and response. Also, House Bill 196, which at this point is probably one of the most discussed bills. This is the COVID-19 Response and Relief. Um, there are multiple provisions to this, uh, that would reflect, um, North Carolina Public Schools. Section 1.2 would direct the Department of Public Instruction to allocate federal funds received under the ESER 2, uh, to support various programs, um, in, in response to COVID-19. It also in section 1.3 directs the State Board of Education to use allocated ESER 2 funds to meet the emergency needs of elementary and secondary schools. Uh, we will be, uh, providing a complete summary of this bill and we will email this to, uh, Dr. Townsend Smith so that you all, uh, can have a further look at this. This is just a new bill that's moving very quickly and we want to keep you up to date on, on everything on this. Uh, the last one, just to continue taking a look at is Senate Bill 170, Students, Parents and Community Rights Act, which permits increased access also to outdoor sporting facilities in public and non-public high schools. A, a brief Education Committee meeting update. Um, uh, the February legislative calendar included multiple meetings, including, uh, Finance Committee briefings, overview of general fund reserves. So we wanted to put that link there so you could take a comprehensive look at these presentations. Very informative, particularly those who are really just kind of dipping their toe into, uh, understanding statewide education budgets. Also, House and Senate approves and education. So wanted to put some links there, uh, for you as well. Uh, and also not included, uh, in this slide are very recent presentations yesterday by Superintendent Truitt, uh, at the Senate Education Hire, um, Education Meeting where she provided the 2021 Legislative Policy Priorities of the Department and the Board. Um, I, we, we will resend this presentation out as well so that you can have that hyperlink to that presentation. Uh, and Mr. Falkenberry and I, uh, just presented this morning at 8:30 to House-Senate Joint Appropriations on the Board and DPI's, uh, Budget Priorities, Expanded Budget Priorities. Um, we both felt like the meeting was, uh, went very well, had a lot of questions that we will be following up on, but we feel like the messaging in our need for particularly long-term strategy priorities that would require recurring funding, um, was very well received. And hopefully we will continue to work on specific pieces of our, uh, February approved budget. Uh, later on this afternoon, we will be presenting, um, jointly on, uh, additional budget requests and some changes. So we will bring you up to date on that. And last piece, and, uh, Mrs. Pittman alluded to this earlier. We're gonna pivot a little bit on the, uh, State of the Shire and the Community Affairs update, and we're gonna partner up with Mrs. Pittman and Mr. Wallace in a, in a joint presentation moving forward. Uh, we're really excited about that. And, uh, as, as Ms. Pittman mentioned, we've got a, a series of district visits that, that we're going to be working on. We would like to extend an invitation, uh, to board members. Uh, we do want you, whenever there's a regional visit, we'd love for you to, to attend. So we will continue sending out invitations whenever we do a, a particular regional, uh, visit. And if your schedule allows, please join us. We've found them very meaningful and, and purpose-driven in alignment with the strategic plan of the State Board and Superintendent Truitt's priorities. So, um, if you see those emails, please, uh, please reach out to us. And Mr. Falkenberry now will, uh, answer any questions that you all might have.
Well, thank you both, Mr. Falkenberry and Mr. McKinney for representing us so well with our partners in the General Assembly as well as, um, partners across our communities in North Carolina. Um, colleagues, I just asked that if you do have questions or would like in, further insights from, from, uh, Mr. Falkenberry or Mr. McKinney, if you could contact them and, uh, and engage in those, those conversations. In order to continue moving on our agenda, we're gonna, uh, forego any further questions, but feel free to reach out. Uh, you, you two guys have done an amazing job in a short period of time under difficult circumstances and we appreciate the teamwork the two of you have formed and, uh, and the work you're doing to represent us across the street. Thank you so much.
Much obliged, sir. Thank you.
Colleagues, we'll now proceed to our two remaining committee meetings of the day. Uh, I remind committee chairs and the audience that all voting on consent and any item requiring action will be done at the end of the agenda via roll call. We'll now proceed to, uh, Dr. Olivia Oxendine, Chair of the Educator Standards and Practice Committee. Dr. Oxendine?
I'll take away to myself. Thank you very much, Chair Davis. Uh, joining me in the leadership responsibilities of this Subcommittee of the State Board of Education is Ms. Amy White. The first item is an action on first reading. And, uh, let me just take 30 seconds and say, uh, to the other chairs of committees, uh, I have the honor of, um, presenting the shortest report to the JLEOC, I think, in the history of the State Board of Education. So it is extremely, extremely brief. Uh, there may be another one just as brief or briefer, but this is a, this is to the point report. And so I am going to call on Dr. Tom Berlin to walk us through this very brief report.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. So, um, this report is brief. This is the licensure fees, uh, increase report due to the JLEOC annually. Um, there are additional items that, um, that are required in the report, but the trigger for the, for those reporting, for reporting out on those items is whether there's been an increase in licensure fees or not. And during the 2021 school year, um, the licensure department, fiscal year, I'm sorry, the licensure department did not have any licensure fee increases. So the requirement to report on those other issues is waived. So the report is just acknowledging that there was no increase in those fees.
Very good. And I, I believe that, excuse me, that report is due to the JLEOC sometime, maybe in the next couple of weeks. Is that correct, Dr. Tom Berlin?
Uh, my understanding is it's the 15th of March.
Very good. Are there any questions, uh, from my colleagues pertaining to this, this report? If none, we will go on to the second item. And the second item is a, um, policy. It is a, um, ESMP2 is a policy amendment in that pertains to sanctions for EPPs. And this is an action item and will be, uh, presented by, uh, Dr. Seibert.
I'm sorry, Dr. Oxendine. This is, this is me. The next one is Dr. Seibert.
All right. Well, take it away, Tom.
So again, this is Tom Tomberlin. Thank you. Um, just to refresh the board members' memory on this item, uh, TCE, TCED 008 is being, um, realigned to statute. Uh, the policy was non-compliant with existing state statute and, um, in reference to the sanctions levied against an EPP that fails to make, um, adequate, uh, have proficient ratings on our accountability model. Um, the, the EPP, just to remind you, if they, um, are in revoke status, if they, if they're designated as revoked, that the EPP must stop admitting students and, uh, and recommending students for licensure for a period of two years, at the end of which they may seek initial authorization from the Board, uh, to be reinstated. And so we're just bringing this policy in line with, uh, current statute.
Okay, very good. And remind, remind the board again of the three, I think there are three, uh, types of sanctions, aren't there?
So they could be, well, I think there's two. They could be on warning, which is an early indicator that, um, that they're, uh, in danger of heading into revoke status. Um, and that requires some peer review and some remediation on the part of the EPP. Um, and then after a certain number of years on warning status, if the, uh, if the performance is not adequate, then they would go into revoke status.
Very good. Do I hear any questions from my colleagues with regard to this item? Very good, Dr. Tom Berlin. This is moving along quickly. We will go, we will go to the third item, and this is going to be presented by Dr. Seibert. And this, uh, pertains to a, a report that is going over to the JLEOC. And it has to do with a report that was required of the State Board last year pertaining to disruptions to our, um, licensing programs in our EOPs resulting from COVID. So this is a very important report that's coming our way. And I will just turn it over to Dr. Seibert.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Oxendine, and good morning, board members. Um, so, uh, since the February board presentation on this, uh, report, uh, we've been able to produce some overall findings from the 2019 and 2020 school year on teacher pipeline. Uh, and this was something that, uh, that Dr. Oxendine had been inquiring about when we were preparing for the December presentation a couple of months ago on EPP performance reports. Uh, so with the board's permission, we'll add these findings that we're going to present to you today, uh, to the report that goes over to the JLEOC. Uh, we also made a, a couple of little technical changes, uh, since the report, uh, that you've, uh, seen back in February. So, uh, if we can go to slide two, the, um, just a quick reminder here, this is coming out of, uh, Session Law 2020-3, Section 2.22F. Uh, and this was, uh, essentially the, the COVID, uh, adjustment, uh, law, uh, to account for, uh, the disruption that COVID caused in the spring. Um, and what they're asking for is, uh, over at the JLEOC is data around the number and percentage, uh, of students who were admitted to an EPP with a grade point average lower than a 2.7 and the number and overall percentage of students who had their clinical internships deemed completed. Um, and those were because they adjusted and accommodated for the disruption, uh, in, uh, in the 1920 school year, uh, for those, uh, for the, for the loss of time, uh, in front of the, in front of kids during student teaching. Um, so, um, regarding the, uh, small changes we made to the report, um, we added, um, some descriptors to the GPA table in that report, uh, under the degree level categories, uh, just to define what those are because, um, later, after I presented in February, it occurred to me that, uh, people reading this may not, not know what ULO stands for. Uh, and again, we're just trying to fit everything on a page. So we fleshed those, those degree levels out to represent undergraduate, uh, undergraduate licensure only and residency, uh, candidates. Uh, and the second area is that we've provided more specific labeling in the percent of student teachers impacted by COVID, um, because the data we collected was, uh, from the EPPs was technically the number of weeks of face-to-face student teaching. In many cases, the, uh, institutions were able to, to do some, uh, sort of Plan B strategy around, um, virtual settings. Um, and so what we captured was the, the amount of weeks of the 16-week obligation that were face-to-face for student teaching. Uh, so that, that's the technical changes that we made. So, um, that's the, the, the basics of the report. Um, now I'd like to share with you some of the data we've learned, um, in, uh, examining data across, uh, 2019, 2020, as well as some, uh, some more longitudinal data. And we're gonna take us, uh, we're gonna start by looking at the, uh, the overall pipeline production. So on this slide here, what we're trying to do here is visually demonstrate the trajectory of a cohort of educator preparation candidates that were admitted in North, to North Carolina EPPs and then track their participation in that, uh, the, in that pipeline and their career development over time. So on the far left, you'll see, um, represented there, um, all of the candidates that were admitted into educator preparation programs in North Carolina in the school years, uh, 2013, 14 and 2014, 15. So it's a total of 10,428 students that entered educator preparation programs. Um, we stopped with 14, 15 because cohorts that are, uh, more recent than that need more full, more time to fully realize the trajectory that we're presenting here. So it's, it's, uh, that's why we're, we're limiting it to just those two years. Now of those that started, of those 10,000-plus students that started, about 76% of them, about three quarters of that initial cohort actually completed their program. Now moving from left, uh, to right across the screen here. Uh, fewer than half of the, of the entering cohort, about 49% of that cohort took a teaching position in North Carolina schools within three years of the completion of their program. And a fewer 37% of the initial cohort, uh, that began teaching actually taught for three or more years. And then lastly, on the far right, we see that from the initial cohort, only about 25% earned a performance rating of effective or above at the completion of their third year. So again, this is just sort of, uh, visual of, of how the pipeline, um, moves over time and, uh, and the, the, the starting point versus the ending point in terms of, uh, the numbers. So with that, let's take a look at the, a closer examination of admission and completion data. On the next slide, there, there's a lot of information on this slide, uh, but once you get a, get your mind wrapped around what's, what's offered here, I think it'll, it'll make, uh, some sense. So, uh, essentially what we're trying to look at here is a snapshot of the trends in educator preparation program admissions from 2015 through 2020. Um, and then we're just slicing it up, uh, looking at it from a, a couple of different, uh, angles. So if we start with the overall graph at the top, um, you'll see that what we've provided here is a line graph of all candidate admissions into North Carolina EPPs from 2015 through 2020. And then in 2020, we see a total of 5,003 candidates were admitted, and that represents a decline of about 7% from levels captured back in 2015. The graph is then presented in orange, which indicates that this is a statistically significant decline from between, uh, 2015 and 2020. So the rest of the graphs that you're seeing here are presented in the same manner. Orange indicates the significant decreases, uh, in 2020 from levels observed back in 2015. Blue indicates significant increases and no statistically significant change would be provided in gray. So we've broken the admissions down then from the overall, we broke it down by gender, ethnicity, licensed group, pathway and degree. That's what you're seeing across that page there. And across all the subgroups then, while overall admissions has declined, we do see growth in admissions, uh, is coming from people of color pursuing alternative routes to licensure. So that's a little bit about the admissions. Uh, we can apply the same strategy and the same timeframe, the same visual cues from that previous slide we looked at, and we can apply that to completions. And that's what you're seeing on this slide. So again, if we begin with the overall chart at the top, we see that in 2020, 3,000 we see that in 2020, 3,701 candidates across all E P Ps in North Carolina completed their program. And that represents about a 15-point percentage point decline from levels that we captured back in 2015. And again, because it's orange, we've indicated that that is a statistically significant decline. So again, orange indicates significant declines. Blue indicates increases. And grays are changes that are not then when we look across all these subgroups, there are no significant increases found in any of the subgroups that were examined on the on the completions data. And just as a reminder, although it's not listed here, this represents the 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 number of people that start, as we as we mentioned back on the slide, roughly three quarters of candidates admitted end up completing the program. So on the next slide here, the the next couple of slides, what we tried to do was provide some data to the board around the board's statewide strategic plan, their 20 your 2025 statewide strategic plan, specifically Goal One, Objective Six, which is to increase the number of educators of color in schools across North Carolina. So given this strategic goal and the recent presentation to the board a couple of months ago on the DRIVE Task Force Report and their initiative, we thought it would be worth taking a quick look at the diversity of the pipeline for you. So that's what these next couple of slides are going to do. So the the slide that you see in front of you now is examining the diversity of all North Carolina teachers. So that now we're not, we're not looking at just beginning teachers. We're looking at all teachers across North Carolina from 2015 again through 2020. And we're comparing that to the diversity of the students that they serve. Teachers are indicated in orange and students are indicated in gray. That's the lines that you see. On the far left column, you can see that in 2020, about 75% of North Carolina's teacher population was white, compared to about 46% of the students that they serve. And we see that this is a decline in levels observed back in 2015. Now, that's one piece of information that you can get from this slide. But we can also apply the rate of change that is observed from 2015 to 2020 to approximate changes to the teaching field in the future. It's just sort of a a point of conversation to think about. So if if we held the student demographics to the 2020 levels that you see here, and we set a basic argument that the teacher diversity should reflect the diversity that that we see in the students that they serve as a point of reference, then we can predict approximately how long it's going to take for those changes in teacher demographics to ultimately meet the student distribution. So as an example, if we say that it would be helpful for our for the black teacher population to be the same percentage as the black student population of 24%. Given the rate of change that we've seen in the black teacher population from 2015 through 2020, it would take about 15 years to achieve that goal. And then moving across the slide from left to right for Latinx and all other race ethnicities, it's a much longer time period to achieve that, 91 years and 99 years respectively. So a couple of other bits of information here. First is that we chose to limit the possible of this possibility of the disaggregations of race ethnicity to the three largest student populations, white, black, and Latinx in in North Carolina. And we chose to do that to to limit the amount of information and avoid information overload on one slide. And again, we were just trying to to give you a snapshot of what the data are showing relative to the objective of the board in in its 2025 goals. And the second is that we're we're for the point of this argument, we are holding student populations to their 2020 levels. But you can see that the trends observed in Latinx and the all other categories are outpacing teacher growth in those same areas. So the only reason that they're able to achieve that over time is if we hold that hold that point constant for the point of of conversation. So another way to look at this data is to think about diversity in the teacher population in terms of teacher-student ratios. That's a common way of thinking about the proportions. And we see here in the middle of this screen is essentially the overall teacher-student ratio across North Carolina. We can think of that as one teacher for about every 15 students. And then if we look at white teachers in the top left to white students, that ratio moves down to about one teacher for every nine students. As of 2020, there was essentially one black teacher for every 23 black students, one teacher of all other races for every 61 students of all other races, and one Latinx teacher for every 98 Latinx students. The next slide here is just a quick snapshot of the average grade point average of the of the entering students into educator preparation programs. You'll see on the left side that that in 2013, the average GPA was a 3.32. That has remained really stable and increased ever so slightly to a 3.43 grade point average in 2020. And on the right, we're just providing the the proportion of candidates over the the different areas. And we see that there's a greater proportion of candidates above a 3.0 over time and a shrinking population of candidates below a 2.7. Now, Slide 12, I wanted to put in here some information for the board on accountability of educator preparation programs. In the same bill that required this report to the J L E O C, there was also a section on accountability of educator preparation programs, Section 2.22 subsection D. And essentially, what it's saying there is E P Ps for the 2019, 2020 school year shall only be required to submit information that is practicably available for that school year. And currently, educator preparation programs are held to three measures, and that is data associated with N E S A S, E V O S, and educator satisfaction. And in 2019, 2020, E V O S and N E S A S data were not practicably available. We do, however, have some data collected on recent educator satisfaction. And that's going to be on the next slide. So now this slide is a quick snapshot of trends in positive responses. So this is capturing first year teachers only. At the end of their first year, they are responding to a series of questions. The percentage of folks that responded, they were either well prepared or very well prepared, the 25 survey items. And those items have been asked over four years, 2016 through 2020, on a survey that they get in the spring. We're actually getting ready to start that survey that's coming in just a couple of weeks. So most of the items that you'll see across here are shown in gray. That indicates that there's not statistically significant changes in the in the the amount of the percentage of folks that are positively viewing the conditions they're being asked about. You'll notice some blue lines, and those represent items that are exhibiting significant increases. That includes teachers reporting either being well or very well prepared to reflect on their practice, to align instruction with state standards, to foster an atmosphere of group respect within the classroom, and to match instruction to student goals. And across this whole page, you'll see no items showed a statistically significant decrease. And then looking from the top of the of the page down, you'll notice 80% or more of candidates consistently reported being well or very well prepared on the items in the first two rows. And areas where fewer candidates felt well or very well prepared are across the bottom row. And that includes areas like discipline, relationships, building relationships with parents, and working with special needs children, English language learners, and gifted students. Lastly, I just wanted to remind the board that the E P P dashboard and a lot of the visualizations, particularly the visualizations you've seen here have been developed by our colleague, Dr. Andy Baxter. And he is on a two-year tenure with us on a grant from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation that concludes in September of 2021. And we're going to need a dedicated F T E going forward from that point to maintain the educator preparation program dashboard and a lot of its fairly sophisticated infrastructure going forward. And that has been requested in the budget request.
Thank you so much, Dr. Seibert. And absolutely, these are very interesting frames. But equally, if not more interesting and thought provocative are the data that the board has had a chance of the last 20 minutes to review and think about. I have jotted down kind of in a categorical way three questions, but I I will reserve these questions. In some cases, maybe a couple of more comments. I will put those aside and give my fellow board members a chance to weigh in, ask a question if you need a clarifying. If you have a clarifying question, feel free to ask it, Dr. Seibert, or a question in general.
Dr. Oxendine, it's Matt Bristow Smith.
Absolutely. Matt?
Thank you so much. Dr. Seibert, I wanted to ask if the state level data that you reflected about the disparities in in most cases between teacher demographics and student demographics, is that data available that can be broken out and made available to LEAs? So that individual LEAs that have teacher diversity as one of their internal goals for their district could make those kinds of projections? Like, there's a 50, you know, at our current rate, it would be 15 years before our percentages of African American teachers meets the equivalency of our African American students. Those are difficult data metrics for a lot of smaller counties to track and to make projections about. And I just wondered if that data set's available.
Not at this time, but you bring up a good point. And I think being able to provide it at the LEA level is something we should explore. We can certainly look to try and expand that into the some of the dashboarding that we do and and be able to share that to LEAs when we get it put together. Yes, it's something that we have the capability of doing. And we look towards providing that in the near future.
Awesome. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Mr. Ford.
Yes, Mr. Ford.
Sort of sort of dovetailing off of Mr. Bristow Smith, Principal Bristow Smith's point. Thank you, Dr. Seibert, for presenting this data visually. It's it's great to be able to see it and at least kind of serve as a baseline for where we're at, particularly the demographic piece that he mentioned. I I just wonder, and I'm kind of planting as a seed for us as board members to think about and in in responding to that very strategic goal of diversifying the educator pipeline. You know, we know, and this has been brought up by E P Ps before, that, you know, while they do have plenty of agency and, you know, influence and responsibility in this regard, that it takes, you know, a system-wide approach. And so I wonder, as those data are made available at the P S U level, if, you know, P S U's might consider also themselves using that to to draft their or their educated diversity plan so that it's not static data, but rather something that we're imploring folks to to do something with, right? And setting internal goals for how they might diversify. And so that rate of change, hopefully, that you referred to, Dr. Seibert, can begin to tick up as other hands are all put on deck. And so that's more of a comment rather than a question. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes, Ms. Cam. Yes.
I do have a question. If we can go back to, I think it was Slide five. Whoa, whoa, whoa. This one. Yeah, is that the? Yeah. So, Dr. Seibert, I'm I'm a little taken aback by the drop between completions and actually taught within three years. Is that number? Is that typical over over a span of time? Or are? I don't know. Any explanation for that or context?
Again, as a sort of thinking through all the possibilities of why that might be occurring is sort of a different a different lift. But I can I can tell you that some folks, some E P Ps, I can give you one explanation. Some E P Ps that produce teachers coming out of their educator preparation programs, many of those folks return to their home state, which may not be North Carolina. So we are seeing some exodus from the original teacher pipeline as candidates move to other states at the point at the point of completion from their program. But there's lots of, there are potentially lots of factors that are pushing and pulling on the retention of folks within the state and and to retain within within the public school setting.
All right, thank you. And then and then the the drop of from 49%, well, let's see. 37% stay beyond three years. Is that a pretty typical over time?
Well, again, I I think it's a great question. And and we've only just been able to look at this longitudinally like this. This is this is sort of our first our first foray into it. And I I think it's a it's a place to put a stake in the ground and watch very carefully over time to see how emerging cohorts in the future compare. And and also keep in mind that this this is looking at a variety of different pathways, not not just any one particular pathway. So we're sort of lumping all of these together to have this conversation. So looking at a particular pathway might might provide more specific results than what you're seeing on an overall.
Well, just to comment, I mean, putting my roundtable hat on, looking at this graph, this is exactly the graph that in in if we can make some progress on some of those recommendations, this is the this is the slide that I'd like to see in five years and see it look quite different from the way it looks right now.
Yes, I'm I'm looking forward to seeing how how this will develop over time as as the E P Ps think about, you know, modifications and and changes that they can do internally, as well as other factors that are pushing and pulling on the pipeline, potential policy changes, potential modifications in law. We talked about a couple of months ago the the idea of the accountability model proposal changes that that the board has recommended to the J L E O C to consider back last fall. So there's, you know, potential changes on outcomes from Leandro, from the the DRIVE Task Force. There's a lot of moving parts that could really impact in positive ways the pipeline. So yes, I think I think having this as a as a way of looking at the data is going to be particularly helpful in the coming years.
Are there other questions from my colleagues?
Madam Chair, this is the Superintendent.
Yes, Superintendent Truitt.
Thank you. If I have a question about Slide seven. It appears that the outlier in this data is under ethnicity and other. Which is the Trends in E P P completion slide. How is other being defined here?
I'd have to give you, off the top of my head, I don't I don't have the list of the disaggregated data. But essentially, we 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 follow the disaggregation. And I don't know, Dr. Tomberlin may be able to jump in and and support on this one. I know that we we follow the disaggregation that's recommended from the federal level. And so there are some other categories like Pacific Islanders, multiple race candidates, that kind of thing that that are represented in that in that other category. But I can I can be sure to get you the specifics.
So the, yeah, the the mixed race category is is of special concern when I see Slide nine. I would encourage us to be careful about using the word match when we're talking about a goal that is to diversify the workforce in general. Because we are not going to be able to match the the ethnicity of teachers to the ethnicity of students. So we need to be cautious. And yes, we have a broad goal, as stated in the presentation, of diversification of the teaching workforce. I I want to be sure that I understand what our goal is alongside the Governor's Task Drive Task Force. Because in order to know if we've achieved, if we have achieved our goal, we need to make sure that everything, all of our actions are in alignment with with that goal. all of our actions are in alignment with, with that goal. So I want to make sure that I'm understanding along the way. I guess what the, if there are subsets of this goal. Is the goal to, to match? Is it, or is it simply as broadening the overall diversity of our teaching workforce?
Superintendent Truitt, I think you make a really good point here, and I, we put this slide together as a point of conversation. And this was the way that we interpreted the objective that was listed in the, in the, the board goals. And should the board be interested in fleshing out or being much more specific, or perhaps thinking about things in a different way? Then, you know, obviously, we can, we can certainly try and provide information that may be better aligned to how you're interpreting or how you intend to look at the diversity of the pipeline. But I agree with you. I, I think that was a point of argument to just provide context as a way of thinking about the data. I don't know that matching populations, teacher populations to student populations was ultimately the goal of this board. It was, it was more about providing a lens or a topic of conversation as a starting point.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other questions from my colleagues or around the table?
Madam Chair, it's Mr. Ford again.
Mr. Ford, go right ahead.
Yeah, and I think this is a good conversation to have. And Dr. Seiberg, thank you for pointing out the ambiguity of that and starting the conversation. I guess I would ask, you know, what would be the caution behind race matching? Or shall we say proportional representation of the teaching workforce? And, and what are the conclusive reasons that we believe as a state that, that that goal is not attainable?
Well, my, my concern is that when I look at Latinx, that's not just one, that's not one ethnicity. And so are we, are we saying that? Is, is, is the goal to look at subcategories within the Latinx community and match in that regard? Or is it to? Or, or is it to just, or is it to, to just say, we would like to have? I mean, I'm thinking about in, in a, in a rural county where the majority population is 90% white. Are we saying that we want to match the teaching workforce in that community? And then those students will not have a diverse set of teachers? I don't think that's, I think that would be an unintended consequence of what we're saying.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that's a fair point, you know, with regard to certainly counties that don't have diversity is the expectation that we maintain the level of lack of diversity in those counties. And so I think that requires some further investigation. I, I just, as we talk about race and ethnicity, and again, those terms oftentimes are conflated, and they are nuanced. I think the general notion of proportional representation writ large throughout the state is something that I think is still an attainable goal for us as a, as a body statewide.
Very good conversation. I'm going to ask if there are other questions or comments regarding the presentation. Very good data, very thought provoking. One of the, one of my, my final thoughts around this presentation is should we really, and this is kind of a rhetorical question, we probably need to get together a group of people to look at, this is not my rhetorical statement, but a thought before I get to that. And it's perhaps we need to get a group of people within the department and other stakeholders and perhaps some state board members to weave together some reports. I'm thinking of the State of the, the Teaching Profession Report, because it's chock full of data that tells us about the pipeline, the reasons, I think we go into the reasons. I know we do, that teachers leave or move or, or other. We have the report that's before us today, these data, and we have the Drive Report that has to be woven into the, the conversation and began to ask some big questions. And one of the questions has to do with, if it's, it seems like taking 99 years to close the gap in proportionality in terms of diversity of the workforce, the teaching workforce, and then getting somewhat of a match, which seems unrealistic in some regions, to look like the teaching or the student population. Maybe the other question that need, that we need to ask ourselves, or should we be about preparing the, the workforce, the teaching force, regardless of the color? Preparing them to be the very best they can be, regardless of the color of the students. And then particularly, preparing them to teach students of color, but preparing them to the fullest extent possible to be the finest teacher that North Carolina can produce. That's a big question, and, but it's an important question. If there are no, no other questions or comments, thank you, Dr. Seiberg. And this is, this is an item for action this month. And we'll go right on to the. This is a, this is a new, this is a new business item. I'm very privileged, and you're going to be, feel the very same way to be part of a presentation that is going to be coming to us in just a minute or two. We have the presenters, our Dr. Shirley Prince, and she is the Program Director for the North Carolina Principal and a Principal Assistant Principal Association. She's the Executive Director of that organization. And she is also the Director of the Trends, the Transforming Principal Preparation Program, the TP3, and we will learn more about that momentarily. And joining her in the presentation is Dr. Eddie Price, and he is the Director of the North Carolina Principal Fellows Program. We are going to hear in the next few minutes about, we're going to learn about the TP3 program from findings presented in an evaluation of this project. I am privileged to serve on the North Carolina Principals Fellows Commission. And I, I hear good things at our meetings from individuals who think all the time about principal preparation. So the information that you are about to receive will certainly tie into discussions that we routinely have about what it takes to have the best possible leaders in our schools. And the information will certainly feed into our strategic conversations about the preparation of our principals. So with that said, I will, I will be quiet and turn it over to the two presenters.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, great. Thank you again, and thank you Chairman Davis, Superintendent Truitt, board members and advisors. I'm very happy to be with you today. As Dr. Oxendine shared, I am here to give you a summary of the findings and the recommendations based on the independent evaluation of the TP3 program over the last five years. I want to say that I commend you as a board for your strong focus on educator preparation in your strategic plan, and especially your strong focus on principal preparation and support. The information I'm sharing with you today will hopefully inform your decisions as you implement your strategic plan. Next slide, please. Okay, great. The, the TP3 legislation was enacted in 2015, 16. And the aim of the legislation was to transform principal preparation across the states. Super, superintendents, especially in our highest needs districts, and across the nation really, were struggling to find enough principal candidates that they felt were well-prepared enough for the challenges they would be facing in today's schools. The reason this presentation is important for you as board members, even beyond the fact that it's such an important part of your strategic plan, is that by September 15th, 2021, the legislation says that as a board, you are to revise the standards for principal preparation program approval based on the recommendations for scaling these transformational practices and report changes to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee by November 15th. So Dr. Townsend Smith felt that we needed to get this in front of you so that you would have plenty of time to think about it and consider if you wanted to revise your standards according to some of the recommendations. All right, and, and in, let's see, 2019, Senate Bill 277 was passed. And what it did was establish a new TP3 commission that would transition the responsibility for administering the program, the TP3 program, and the funding. And this commission has been meeting, and last December, they approved eight principal preparation programs. That there were four new ones that were approved. However, this presentation is going to primarily focus on the five original TP3 programs that were selected. And those are High Point University, NC State University, UNCG, the Sand Hills RISA, and Western Carolina University. Next slide, please. This particular slide, I think, is important for you because it shows how all of the candidates that are TP3 funded have been distributed across the state. And it, and it counts, and it's also illustrating the candidates that are in the newly approved programs as well. So it's, it's like all the TP3 candidates that will be supported through 2022. You will note that there are, the candidates are fairly clustered around currently funded programs. You will also note that they, that we have very few TP3 funded candidates in areas of the state without a TP3 funded program. For example, the Southeast, the Northeast, and the Northwest. In this presentation, I'm going to focus on, on the, the five original grantees that have been studied and evaluated to determine the degree to which the programs were implementing a set of research-based practices that have been shown to be essential to effective principal preparation. And these, in, in doing that, it will be in an effort to make recommendations for scaling these practices across North Carolina. A little bit about the evaluation. GrantPros has conducted a three-tiered independent evaluation. They've evaluated us and, and our administration of the grant program for the, the last almost five years. They've evaluated the institutions conducting TP3, and they've evaluated individual participants in TP3. I think you will find that their evaluation has been extremely thorough. One of the things that I think is important to note here is that the impact that graduates have on improving student achievement can only be determined over time, and after the graduates are really in principal positions. As we speak, almost all of our TP3 graduates are in assistant principals positions. So for, if we're going to determine the quality of our programs, we have to rely on measuring things such as leading indicators, such as the degree to which the programs are implementing the best practices for principal preparations, programs, and also other comms such as student satisfaction level. The level of satisfaction among the superintendents in the quality of the candidates, retention, those sorts of things. Okay, so we've organized the findings according to the evaluation of programmatic features and budgetary features. In the interest of time, we've also provided you a separate document in your materials with data that support these findings. You will have, those are in your materials, but we didn't want to include all of those charts and tables, just simply in the interest of time. That would just be too much for today. Our, our analysis will be mainly covering the first two funding cycles. And you can see there which programs are represented in the, in the first two funding cycles. And then for us this year, the three programs are also listed, but primarily, we're focusing on the first two funding cycles. The original five programs have enrolled 330 students over all three funding cycles. A total of 242 individuals have graduated from the first two funding cycles, which is a 95% graduation rate. As of this, this past month, February 2021, 183 individuals, 75.6%, have been hired in positions as either principals and assistant principals. We do not count those individuals that are placed in positions that may be leadership-type positions, but they aren't actually named principal or assistant principal. The, the next slide shows the placement rate for the original TP3 programs. It shows the percentage of graduates who are currently serving in either principal or assistant principal positions by program. Most, as I said, are in AP positions. Very few are already in principal positions. But you can see the first funding cycle, obviously, in, in the legislation, we measure the number of graduates that are placed over a three-year period. So obviously, we are doing better in the first funding cycle, 83%. The second funding cycle, 68.5% placement rate. One of the things that I need to share is that the 24 graduates in the Sand Hills RISA, with the asterisk there, they were, 14 of them actually graduated this past December. So they would not have had time to get placed at large numbers by now. The next slide shows the percent of candidates that are placed in high-need schools. That is very important. It's a big focus of the TP3 legislation. And you can see the first funding cycle, 94.9%, 80% in the second funding cycle for a total of 88%. More information is in your separate handout on this. Now, there's some commonalities in best practices across all five programs. As a matter of fact, over the last almost five years, the programs have become very similar programmatically. They all have dedicated program leadership. They were working on trying to nurture very close relationships with the LEAs, targeted recruitment, rigorous selection of, of program participants. The goal is to shift away from a self-selection type approach and, and really target individuals that superintendents and, and others think have the propensity to be really effective principals. And so there's a very rigorous selection process. They operate in cohort groups. All of the candidates must either earn a master's or an add-on licensure. They also, on the next slide, you'll see that they are focused on authentic, project-based, hands-on learning activities. There is a strong emphasis on issues of instructional leadership and equity. Again, high-need schools. And probably what makes our program the envy of all other states is that we have a fully paid, released is that we have a fully paid, released internship. We pay for the complete salary of these individuals right now. And that is key because it allows a superintendent to approach any teacher and say, "We believe you have what it takes. We want to support you through a principal preparation program. We will pay your complete salary, your benefits package. We will pay for all your tuition, your fees." That is what TP3 allows us to do. And another common commonality is that all of the providers have participated in an annual, since the inception, we have several meetings a year of a professional learning network. And it has been very well received. From that professional learning network, we have determined, or we have been able to make some improvements over the last five years that we think have been key. More participant salaries are being held harmless. The project directors are early on realized that those that were serving higher-need districts were having trouble recruiting teachers into their prep programs because the districts that weren't able to pay their complete salary and they just could not agree to do the program. So now that the TP3 funding is available to hold harmless these individuals, we're getting very high-quality candidates. So stronger recruitment and selection, stronger partnership with LEAs, improved selection of mentors, greater emphasis on real-world experiences and more focused coaching. So to just sum up, all five of our programs are really very similar. They all have, excuse me, they all implement a set of best practices. They are all rated extremely high on the programmatic evaluation criteria. You can find that in your separate handout. 95% are graduating. And then you see again how many we've been able to graduate over the two funding cycles. And 88% of these individuals are in high-need schools. So some of the budgetary evaluation activities. The MSA, on the next slide, I think it's important for us to mention the MSA salary funds because of its impact on the amount of state funds expended per TP3 student. And this is important because we were looking at what is it going to take to scale these programs across the state? So we were looking at all of the funding that was required for this. And prior to the change that was supported by all of you board members to increase the amount of salary that was allowed for an intern, prior to that, we were having to make up the salary for the individuals from TP3 funds. But now, since their complete salary is being provided, that has opened up a whole new world and it is really a good thing for the program. You will see that not all of the programs accessed the MSA funds. Early on, it was only North Carolina State University. Then the next year, we had three programs, UNCG and Western to also, and NC State to also do that. Starting this year, all eight programs will be accessing those funds. The next slide is a little complicated, so I'll just summarize it. Basically, what it is showing is the amount of state funding that was required for each graduate. And it's lower, the actual cost per student is lower for some of these programs. I want to make the point that some of these programs, actually two of them, High Point and Sand Hills RISA, only had a five-month internship versus a 10-month internship. But you will see that they did not access the MSA funds. They will be providing 10-month internships and accessing the MSA funds moving forward. Okay, the next slide was provided to us by the evaluators and it shows a fairly notable difference in the programs in the amount and percentage of grant funds devoted to operational and institutional expenses versus participant benefits. On the left-hand side, you see the operational institutional costs, that's salaries and benefits for institutional employees, travel materials for employees, contractual services to enhance MSA coursework, executive coaches, indirect cost. On the right-hand side, salaries and some fringe benefits for the participants during internships, university tuition costs and support to LEAs, primarily mentor stipends, and then participant travel. You will see in the red that we've got executive coaches and university tuition costs. And that's because we've had some debate on where those ought to go. There are some that believe the executive coaches should be on the participant benefit side. There are some that think the university tuition cost, since it goes to the institution, should be on the institutional side. But I just offer that to you as something for you to consider. The next slide provided to us by the evaluators shows the variation in institutional and participant budgetary costs, how they use their funds. The next slide, this slide shows payments made to institutional personnel for salary and fringe. And you see that that ranges is very wide there as well. The next slide shows the cost of participants' benefits, chiefly for internship salary, fringe benefits, tuition. And this is again over the four-year period and you see the differences there. So in summary, the programmatic features and outcomes of these five programs were generally similar. However, the evaluators found significant budgetary differences in the use of the TP3 funds. You see a range there. Cost per student ranged from $50,000 to $116,000. Institutional expenses ranged from 25% to 51%. Payments to institutional personnel ranged from 3% to 30.9%. Expenditures for participants' benefits from 74% to 48%. So based on those programmatic similarities, those budgetary differences, the evaluators came up with a set of recommendations. And the recommendations were really guided by the principle that we wanted to scale the highest-quality programs able to produce the highest quantity of principals without sacrificing innovation and quality. Now, some of these recommendations I want to note would require legislative action. It would require your support probably for legislative changes. Some could be acted on through the standards that you determine for approving programs eligible to prepare principals. And some could be acted on by the newly-formed TP3 Commission. The first recommendation focuses on optimizing the recruiting and selection of the most qualified participants, especially from the highest-need school districts. The project directors that serve high-needs districts told us that, again, they were getting some reluctance of teachers wanting to accept their entry into the program for reasons that you can understand. They felt like they couldn't take a drastic pay cut or do without benefits. So we are recommending that TP3 funds, now combined with full MSA salary funds, be used to cover the full cost of participant tuition, fees and books, participant salaries and associated fringe benefits. And that includes health and local supplement. The retirement, we believe, could be optional because Principal Fellow's Program did not have that as a feature and we believe that could be optional. Candidates would still earn a year of experience, but they would not earn a year of retirement. So we believe that that could be an optional cost. And if all of this were covered, we believe it would create a more equitable situation for our highest-need school districts. And then, second, we would recommend continue to redesign the MSA programs to incorporate more of the current enhancement experiences into tuition-based courses. This would save a substantial amount of TP3 funds that could be used to prepare additional principals. Other states that don't have TP3 funding, that have the benefit of it, states that we have benchmarked with, that have actually redesigned their MSA programs, have done this without additional funding. In other words, they are able to offer a transformed MSA program without additional funding. We are blessed to have the funding and we believe we need to continue to redesign the MSA program. If there is a need for enhancement activities, it is because there are perceptions that the MSA program may not cover everything that needs to be covered. Okay, we are also recommending that we optimize the number of principal candidates served to assure a more consistent return on investment in the number of graduates. We are saying that over the next six years, 450 to 500 individuals will be graduating, but that falls well short of the demand. One of the evaluator's recommendations was to establish a graduated cap on the percentage of grant funds going toward salaries for personnel and programmatic costs. And the rationale, and this was taken directly from the report, TP3 grant funds should not be viewed as supplementing operations at a principal preparation program in perpetuity. Rather, the grant, as is with most grants, should be a temporary infusion of revenue. However, knowing what makes TP3 special, it is important that longstanding quality programs should continue to receive TP3 funding for participant expenses, the tuition, the salary, the benefits, and graduated reductions in funding for institutional expenses. Another way that we could optimize the number of principal candidates would be to target the use of TP3 funds to the highest-need districts. Right now, the definition for high-needs districts and schools is very broad and it covers pretty much 80% of the schools in the state. We could come up with a definition that is tighter than that and it could be tight enough to target just the really high-need schools and maybe focus it on the percent of students that are receiving free and reduced lunch, a number of other. That's something that would have to be worked on, a new definition. Okay, the next recommendation involves expanding the number of TP3 grant rewards beyond the eight currently allowed in the amended legislation so that the program can be scaled across the state as the legislation intended. The original legislation did not limit the number of programs. Our philosophy is that we've seen candidates tend to be in close proximity to the geographic location of the providers as the map that I showed you previously showed. And our philosophy is that we should seek to scale TP3 so that every principal granted a license has graduated from a transformed prep program. We also think that we should work on promoting and strengthening more awards that serve the high-needs districts, minority-serving IHEs, private IHEs and LEA-driven principal development programs. Two of our programs, High Point and Sand Hills, have served as good examples of how such programs can be competitive and innovative. Next, we are also recommending that we look at alternative ways of developing principals through more district-driven principal pipelines, such as the ones that are featured in the Wallace Study. On the next slide, many of you have probably seen this. It was a study done in large districts, but it can certainly apply to groups of school districts working together, like the Sand Hills RISA, like the Charlotte, the Southwest RISA. And that particular study, I would say, is something that, if you're not familiar with it, you need to take a look at it. It's one of the few initiatives that can actually pinpoint a cause and effect, or a strong correlation rather, to the Principal Pipeline Initiative, Improving Reading and Math. And then wrapping this up, I would say, with or without continued or new TP3 funding, incorporate opportunities that exist to embed these practices across the state. Continue to provide the professional learning network for the providers. Continue to provide individualized technical assistance and continue to have an independent evaluation. In conclusion, I just want to say, we are, again, blessed to have this investment in our state into the principalship. It's going for us to be able to transform principal preparation across the state. We're going to have to continue to have the highest expectations for implementing the best practices, careful use of the resources and close monitoring for results. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Prince. And let's just pause for about one minute because we're getting ready to move into Dr. Price's presentation. But Dr. Prince presented quite a bit, so let me just pause for a minute, no more than that, to entertain a question or a comment before we proceed. If none, thank you so much, Dr. Prince. Great information and very good recommendations to consider.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Roxton, would it be okay if I asked a question for Dr. Prince before Dr. Price begins?
Absolutely. I'm so sorry. I must have missed your hint or something. Go right ahead.
Not a bit. And Dr. Prince, it's great to hear your voice on the call. Thank you so much for your leadership. Particularly proud and excited about the work the NC Pop has been doing developing principals across the state and proud of this program. The board members may know, yes, sure. The board members may know that I was a graduate of the Northeast Leadership Academy and that I was, which preceded the TP3 configuration. And that program really drove my decision to leave the classroom and to move into the leadership pipeline. And I want to express to the board that my career goals had always been to be a 30-year classroom teacher. My mom was a 30-year classroom teacher. And to be honest, most of the people in education that I respected the most were people that had gone the distance in the classroom. in the classroom to to make a commitment to stay and working on the ground with students for their entire career. And it took a lot for me to leave my classroom and to become a principal. It was a leap of faith. I will share that I was anxious and fearful and nervous, but that it was the design of this program that made it possible for me to make the jump out of the classroom where I was highly effective and into a principal pipeline program where I would be doing things for the first time, and that the stakes were higher because I was preparing to be a principal. And so it was the design of this program. It was the full-year internship. That was a paid internship that allowed me to put food on the table for my family, to continue to, you know, have healthcare. And in my case, we were able to maintain our retirement longevity that made it possible for me to do this. And it was also the incredible level of support for me as a principal candidate. The highly specialized trainings on place-based learning and in working with a variety of challenging factors. We were not just principal preparation candidates. We were school transformation candidates. And the work of this program was not just to get me a job and for not just for me to get a credential, but it was to prepare us to go back into the districts where we had spent our entire career as teachers and to invest as school leaders to turn schools around. You notice from Dr. Prince's map that Edgcombe County has has 10 program participants of the current TP3 configuration, many more from the previous NC State NILA program. And this program has driven incredible talent, incredible commitment, and incredible shared values into our leadership pipeline in our district. And so I can't thank the this program enough for the investment in a tier-one, high-poverty, eastern North Carolina county, Edgcombe County, because it has given us the capacity to to engage in innovative programs like the restart model, like opportunity culture, like dual-language immersion schools. We would not be positioned to do that without a program such as this. I want to emphasize the executive coach role and how powerful that has been because this pipeline is not to prepare us to be assistant principals, is to prepare us to become principals. And so that full-year internship was a principal internship, not an assistant principal internship. And my executive coach, just to give you all an an idea of the caliber of these coaches, my executive coach was Dr. Bill Harrison. I think he, when when we think about people with credibility in public education, Bill Harrison is one of those right up there at the top. And so I can't support enough and emphasize enough the power of this program to to take high-performing teachers and to put them on the leadership track to be school transformation specialists and to bring their instructional leadership into schools that desperately need that. And in our own Edgcombe County, we've seen that firsthand. So, Dr. Prince, my question has to do with how we measure return on investment. I am, as you know, an early college principal, and many of the discussions in the legislature are about the amount of investment in our school versus the amount of value or the amount of return. And I wanted to ask, since so many of the candidates in the TP3 model right now are in assistant principal roles, moving forward as they move into the principalship, what are some of those leading indicators? What are some of those metrics that you anticipate being used to measure their effectiveness as principals once they move into that principalship role? And 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 do you anticipate that any of the recommendations that you might have might change or be altered if we had more of those folks that are already in those principalship roles that the program is preparing them for? And my reason for asking is because Dr. Seiberg, in his previous presentation on teacher preparation, he indicated, and this is an incredible statistic, but that of the 100% of teacher candidates that entered the pipeline in 2013, 2014, six to seven years later, when they were actually in the classroom, only 6% were highly effective. And so what I'm wondering is, how will we gauge through subsequent evaluations the effectiveness of these different programs so that we can tease out what the best practices are that are innovative that need to be scaled? Thank you.
Okay, well, first of all, let me just say, Matt, I couldn't agree with you more about the power of these programs. And I truly believe that the executive coaching is critical. It the executive coaching, the subsidizing of the tuition, the subsidizing of the salary, those three things absolutely critical to the success of this program. But the other thing that is critical is the application of the very solid research-based practices. We know what makes for effective programs, okay? So that's what I commented on are the need to really evaluate the leading indicators. But to your specific question about how do we gauge a principal's effectiveness that has come from one of these programs, once they get to be a principal, and and as you know, it takes a few years, once you are an assistant principal, to become a principal. And Dr. Price and I have talked about the challenge that that faces us to try to quantitatively identify whether or not a program is being effective based on a principal's ability to improve student achievement. Because you need trend data. You need, first of all, for the individual to get in the principalship. Then you need the trend data. And then you're you're kind of several years from the impact of the principal preparation program. And it is difficult to say that the the success of a principal or the lack of success of a principal can be totally attributed to a prep program. So it is difficult. So I think it's very important to listen to superintendents, to get their feedback. A superintendent knows if they are getting what they need out of a principal in in his or her leadership of the school and if the students are getting what they need. A superintendent knows. And that, so contact with the superintendents is probably one of the best ways retaining the principal. Successful principals are usually not going to be moving on in droves. If they're, if they are successful, they they are more apt to stay. And so that's another outcome measure that we can look at. But I hope that that helps a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I do think that the that you've touched on, that real challenge of getting longitudinal data about principal effectiveness that's, you know, objective, and then using that sort of backwards-looking to figure out what are the most innovative practices that are scalable between programs. I think you touched on that very well. Thank you so much.
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you. It was a very good discussion, and we'll move right along to Dr. Price's presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Davis, Board Members, Advisors, Superintendent Truitt. I'll be as brief as possible as I I know we've moved beyond our time. I'm Eddie Price, and as of June 30, 2021, when the two programs, the North Carolina Principal Fellows Program and the Transforming Principal Preparation Program, when they merge, I will assume the role of Director of this merger. I'm currently the Director of the Principal Fellows Program and also directing five of the eight current TP3 institutions. One of the most recognized changes comes as students will no longer receive an individual scholarship loan and they'll and select the university that they want to attend. Instead, they will apply to be selected at a university that is participating in the fully funded grant program. As you can see on this slide, there are eight current institutions participating in the grant-funded model. And for the sake of time, I'm I'm asking to move from Slide 2 to Slide 11. And I'll trust that you'll have time to to read through the slides and contact me if you have more questions. In Slide 11, you'll notice that, let me see right here, that, you know, I want to, I want to comment on where the newly merged program is or will be in relation to the recommendations made by Dr. Prince. And I want to thank Dr. Prince for her passion and leadership and dedication to the program, beginning with its inception in 2016. Regarding recruiting and selecting the best, I couldn't agree more. Speaking on behalf of the commission members, they believe removing financial burdens is a key priority if we want to recruit top talent in the program. In fact, the commission decided after the passage of Senate Bill 113, where the state committed to holding harmless the salary of the principal intern, to require the grant-funded institutions to also pay the local supplement from those funds. They also have directed the LEA to pay the health benefits of the 10-month internship. So there is a commitment to recruiting the top talent in the program. And as you can see on this page, I placed a note that I may be making a proposal to the commission to reconsider the assignment so that the LEA could pay the lesser of the health benefits and the local supplements. Regarding the sharing of best practices from this model, we have designed, in moving forward, our professional learning network meetings to include all principal prep programs in the state. I think we have 23 approved principal prep programs. We hope to not only share out out best practices, but we also want to reveal data from high-yield practices as determined by a third-party researcher. Regarding an institutional personnel cap and the concept of return on investment that Mr. Smith brought up, I'm aware that the outcomes may take time, but I feel we must stay the course until we can determine the outcomes of the various program inputs. When this occurs, we'll be able to truly and accurately discuss return on investment. The data collection used to illustrate performance is a long one and one that some may feel is is more a product of work experience and in-service training than it is of pre-service. So this concept of outcomes is not without scrutiny. I personally believe that we need more employment data measures like superintendent survey, school climate, student achievement, as is referenced in the legislation, to attribute to a principal prep program in order to determine if the program is producing great administrators. Inputs such as lists of enhancements offered by a university, graduation rate, or even the placement rate of the interns doesn't paint the full picture of program prep quality. I'd like to add, and I may say this often, I direct this program based on the will of the commission. These ideas are subject to their collective support. Currently, the service obligation is tied to Title I in schools with poverty. As Dr. Prince presented, the definite definition used identifies to some degree nearly 80% of our schools in the state. Should the definition be more specific to include other criteria, at-risk population, disadvantaged youth, poverty, low performance? I I don't have the suggestion of a definition, but it's pretty, it's a pretty important decision that by creating this definition would not only determine where the new candidates will be placed, but how they will be prepared. Legislation requires interns to be placed according to this definition and the institutions to prepare the intern for this placement. Regarding the expansion of the eight legislated grant-funded programs, the commission has discussed a goal of graduating 200 students per year, which would represent 80% of the typical needed supply. This will not happen without more funding and without odd-year proposals. Since programs are currently delivering closer to that number in the even years, meaning 2020, 2022, we're graduating approximately 170 students. I would think that most of those programs could add an odd year to to double the production without adding the overhead of more programs. It's my understanding that the legislature limited the program to eight grants for two primary reasons. First, having eight institutions means it remains competitive, compelling the grant recipients to prioritize accepting, preparing, and supporting strong candidates. And second, if if our goal is to have 200 graduates per year with cohorts being best-practiced of 15 to 20 members, we'll only need 10 to 14 cohorts. So some of the institutions already support annual cohorts. Others may be able to do the do the same. Which brings me to point three. I believe we can expand within the existing model achieving achieving efficiencies. The commission's informal goal is 80% of the state need, leaving opportunities for other IHEs to retain programs and to have space for out-of-state candidates. In order to dou- to double the production from approximately 40%, which is currently what we're doing, to 80%, almost all of the 5 to 7 million per year increase request would have to be into an odd-year cohort, which which means action would need to occur in the next 12 to 16 months in order to allow programs to recruit candidates for 2023. The commission has not formally discussed changing the legislated number of eight participating programs. But I'll add that if the informal objective of the commission is to produce 200 administrators per year, the eight legislative institutions will need to carry that burden. And if they can't, we would obviously need to expand the number of programs allowed to participate in the grant. In other words, we should let the the programs inform us of the numbers of students they can serve. If eight programs cannot produce 200 admin per year, we should work with the legislator to legislature to expand the program beyond it. I hope you found the presentation informative. I'm sorry for the the brevity, or or maybe I'm not. Thank you for your time. And and since we're running short on time, if you have questions, I'll certainly answer. If you'd rather contact me offline, then I'd be glad to to discuss in more detail.
Thank you so much, Dr. Price and Dr. Prince. And absolutely, we will be calling you back to perhaps sit down with Mr. Tabari Wallace. That's if, that's the new advisor who is going to be help working very closely with Superintendent Truitt to engage principals. So I could see the two of you coming back to the to the agency, to the department, and and going through the recommendations once again, along with Mr. Wallace, Superintendent Truitt, perhaps Dr. Robert Socks, who works closely with the principal standards, and a Dr. Tom Berlun and Dr. Seiberg, so we can more refinely go through your presentation and figure out how best the State Board of Education can support the recommendations that you have brought to us and also be an advocate for you over in the General Assembly. So thank you for your time, your energy, and your expertise. I will, if there is a question of the State Board members, maybe for one, one question, and I am way over time, and but I do want to extend that courtesy before I turn it back to Chair Davis. Thank you very much. And that concludes the report here, Davis.
Thank you, Dr. Oxenden. We'll now go on break and return at 1:50, 1:50.